Is that the way you do it?
Does that work?
They're magnetic.
Desny.
I'll stand up when I wish to talk.
Yep, this one's on.
Great. Welcome, everyone. This is a special City Council work session. This is in regard to our proposed contract amendment for our water reclamation facility and project manager, MKN Associates. This is Tuesday, February 21st, 2017. We're located at the Community Center, multi-purpose room, and the meeting's starting at 4:00 p.m. The record, we do have all council members present. We do have a quorum we call "Meeting Order." Before we go into that, so we just do, this is more of an informal, maybe we just do brief introductions. Coming? Do I need to start all over on that?
Gee, I thought I had it all. You want me to start all over? I'm happy to. Okay. All right. Welcome, everyone. I guess we should all make sure that our mic's on. I'll just make the announcement and call the meeting to order. So we do have a quorum. All council members are present. We'll call the meeting to order. And this is a special City Council meeting on Tuesday, February 23rd, 2017. We're located at the Community Center here at the multi-purpose room. This meeting is starting at 4:00. And the address is 1001 Kennedy Way here in Morro Bay for the viewing audience. The agenda item is review of the direction regarding a proposed amendment to the current contract for the water reclamation facility project and program management services. This is more of an informal setting. Just wanted to go through kind of a roundtable introduction, starting with Councilmember Marla McPherson. We'll just go around and do that first.
Is this on?
I think so.
Okay. Hello, I'm Marla McPherson, council member.
Thank you.
John Rickenbach, Deputy Program Manager.
Robert Davis, Councilmember.
Jamie Irons, Mayor.
Dave Buckingham, City Manager.
Matt Makowetzki, City Council.
Mike Nunley, Program Manager.
John Heding, City Council.
Craig Smolinger, Finance Director.
Lori Kazma, Deputy City Clerk.
Okay. Great. And we'll start with just a quick overview of why we're here, what's going to go on today, and then we'll open up for public comment, and then go into the presentation and the format discussion. And then, time permitting, at the end, we can close with public comment. Just welcome the, I know this is a little bit different for our attending audience in this type of setting, so I'm going to look over my shoulder. Thanks for coming. And then, there's a seat right at the table we'll do for public comment, so there's no speaker slips or anything like that. A little bit more informal setting, so as we get to the public comment and open up for public comment, for those of you that would like to speak, you know, come up, join us. Marla will shift the microphone over to you, and if you could speak for public comment, that'd be great. We'd welcome to have you. And with that, we'll turn it over to City Manager, and you're going to do an overview.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, welcome, everybody. This is a little different format than we're used to regularly, but this has actually been used in Morro Bay before, and it's frankly quite common in many cities to have really more of a sit-around-the-conference-table ability to have a discussion, to have an extended conversation about questions and topics. The city used this for budget development three budgets ago, before I was here, but I believe Mr. Kreins and the City Council and the Finance Director at that time had a budget preview session in a similar setup to this. So, first time in a couple of years for us to do this, but not an unusual setup at all, and really provides an opportunity for more back-and-forth conversation. So to that end, if we just leave our microphones on the whole time, if you leave your microphone on and sort of speak loudly enough that the mic will pick it up, that way we won't feel compelled to pass microphones around and just be able to have a conversation. So the purpose of this is to, this is really a great opportunity to take sort of a deep dive into the program management contract. The program management contract for the work program was approved over a year and a half ago, and that's the contract, actually both for program management and for construction management for the water reclamation facility. So it was structured as a, actually up to a seven-year contract, based on what we anticipated at that time would be a seven-year build of Phase One and Phase Two of the water reclamation facility. And so, this contract with Mike Nunley and Associates needs to be amended about every year, and that is because it's a seven-year contract, and it needs to be sort of looked at and scoped to identify what things were covered in the First Amendment, what was performed during the First Amendment period, and then look at the Second Amendment period, which is what we're looking at now. And then, one of the things we'll, one of the things we'll need to decide toward the end is how the council wants to provide directions to approve the program management amendment, whether you want it to come on the consent calendar at our next meeting or come as a business item and discuss it further at your next council meeting. I should note here, I'll probably do it again at the end, it's important that we get the amendment done fairly quickly. As we discussed this three weeks ago at council, it's okay that we are waiting until the next council meeting, February 28th, to approve this amendment, but should it be delayed further than that, then we'll start delaying some pieces of the project. Specifically, the bridging documents for potential design build need to get, we need to start work on those in order to keep the project on timeline. So the format here after public comment will be, we've got about six, Rob just passed out some slides. Mr. Rob Leibig, our Public Works Director, just came from the copy machine. And Joe Mueller, if you haven't met him, Joe started work with us, thankfully, right after Christmas. He is our Utilities Division Manager and has great experience in water treatment facilities and wastewater treatment facilities and water reclamation projects around the state. So there's about, what's being passed out right now is the updated contract amendment, so you likely have the contract amendment from the previous council meeting. And this is a, MKN, Mike and his team have did a little bit of work to clarify some areas of this, add a couple of things in for clarity, and you have that now. So I'm going to turn it over to Rob here, well, actually, first after public comment, and then we've got a number of areas of discussion. Those include program management services and contracts, just a discussion on what program management contracts normally look like, what the difference is between a professional services contract and, for example, a construction contract, and then into budgeting for program management services, and then into some of the specific tasks included in the contract, the specificity of those tasks, then into capital and operating budgets, and a little bit of the difference between those and how they should or shouldn't synchronize with each other, and then an overview, and then oversight of program management services agreement, how we are providing oversight, both contract oversight and financial oversight, and then address a few additional questions that were raised by the council at our last meeting, and then a discussion at the end of next steps of where we're going from here. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for public comment.
Okay. Great. Thanks for the overview, and as was discussed at the, is the mic on? I'm just going to double-check with you. Okay. I'll look for you. If you see anything, just let me know. So we have that chair right at the end as I post, and then I was going to invite folks up for public comment. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to join us for public comment? Please come on up.
Richard Sadowski. I sit on the WRFAC advisory group there. For several meetings, I've been asking that the Coastal Commission representatives show up to one of our meetings or have a public forum, because I think, I've mentioned, there's a fatal flaw with the whole project regarding the lift station, number one, located in that general area, number two, references in the draft facilities master plan, there's a reference to the Wallace study, and that Wallace study was done in 2004, 2005, and I think it was completed in '06. My work product, when I was working in Cayucus, was being used in that flow study, and it's actually being misused. That flow data is erroneous, and the other aspect, the other thing that I would like to make reference to is the Cleeth and Associates study. Both the Wallace study and the Cleeth and Associates studies have dismissed exfiltration as an issue. I don't even know why. You're writing it down, Mike? I've been bringing this up, and Mike actually stated that he hasn't even looked at any of the data or any of the films regarding the sewer collection system. It has come to my attention as well that there was public members seeking to look at the reports that I had submitted into public records several years ago, and they weren't able to get those, so I'd appreciate those being available to the public. I would suggest that we, my suggestion is that you freeze all spending on the WRF until we can get the public and Coastal Commission in an open forum to discuss any movement for...
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Come on up.
Thank you, Barbara Spagnola. I don't have comment at this time, because I haven't had an opportunity to review the documents that were just passed out, but I would respectfully request you ask for public comment after you've had your discussion, and if any of us have anything to contribute, we'd like to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Anybody else for a public comment?
Homer Alexander. I want to address item number four on your staff report. I realize that the staff would like to treat the WRF as a typical capital project and budget accordingly, but I believe the WRF is different. For starters, there's no approved overall budget. A typical Morro Bay capital budget is for a specific item or a specific project. Currently, the WRF is basically open-ended with a lot of moving parts. It is for that reason that I believe at this stage it should be budgeted annually, so the numbers don't become overwhelming. Therefore, I recommend this amendment be adjusted to only cover the anticipated expenses through the end of this fiscal year. Simultaneously, Mr. Dudley could prepare an Amendment Three, which would cover his expenses for the next fiscal year. In the staff's response to the Finance Committee's recommendation to separate the expenditures by fiscal year, they stated that it might be more meaningful to track expenditures by task group. That may be fine, but since the five of you are more familiar and have a better understanding of the city's traditional budgeting process, they should do both. My suggestion would be to cut this amendment in two pieces. The first piece would add enough money to the original contract plus Amendment One to cover the expenses through June 30th of this year. The second piece would be a new Amendment Three, which would cover the expenditures for '17, '18 fiscal year. Amendment Three would then become the supporting document, one of the supporting documents for the FY '18 WRF budget. Based on another recommendation of your Finance Committee, I would close Amendment One and Amendment Two as soon as the last invoices were received for the work that has been done or is going to be completed by June 30th of this year. I want to remind the five of you that the staff and the consultants ultimately work for you, so it is not unreasonable to request financial reporting that is easy to understand. Thank you.
Thanks, Homer. Since this is a little bit more casual, I know we've been going through this a lot, and we're making the effort to have a work session, I guess I would just ask folks, great detailed information. If that stuff comes to us ahead of time, our staff can prepare for those as well, because we want to be as productive as possible, too. We would appreciate that.
Excellent.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Good afternoon. Ron Reisner. Thanks for the opportunity. First question I have is, when was the modified Amendment Number Two published for the public?
We have a staff response for that?
Thank you. We got that last week. I sent it to the City Clerk on Thursday evening. We had things go on on Friday that distracted our attention from publishing this item, and by the time we got to today, it seemed too late to get it out to staff. So we had a power outage for most of the morning Friday.
If I could, so the city had no power, no computers until early afternoon Friday, and most importantly, we are not asking the City Council to approve this contract tonight, so it is in receipt now. It will be in the agenda packet for the next council meeting, and it'll go on the agenda wherever the council asks to have it on the agenda, whether it's a business item for further discussion or on consent.
The last 72 hours have no particular interest to me. What's of interest to me is that during the City Council meeting on January 24th, the council instructed the consultant to come back with a modified proposal, and it's forthcoming four days ago, four calendar days ago, and hasn't been published prior to this workshop meeting, which has been advertised for several weeks. That's my point. It's a disturbing process. So, to state the obvious, insofar as this workshop is concerned, its scope of work, to state the obvious, any amendment to the MKN contract provides an opportunity to modify and/or add on to the original contract terms. So I'm hopeful that council and staff are looking at this in a holistic fashion, because the original contract, in my humble opinion, has some provisions in it that are not in the best interest of the city necessarily, or its populace. One simple example would be there's a requirement for only an annual review, performance review on the part of the consultant. We're talking about years-long project with tens of millions of dollars to be spent, and we're only going to review the consultant's performance on an annual basis? I hope that that is modified in the amendment. So, I have quite a number of, as the council might recall, I provided them with, I think it was January 20th, with a memo asking a series of questions. I don't intend to readdress those today. I'm hopeful that they will be addressed at some point in time, or at least that there's some feedback as to their particulars of their resolution. I also have some additional items, but based upon the mayor's comments just a little bit earlier, and the city managers, maybe the best thing to do, given that there's some time, would be me to put those into another memo and provide them to you without taking your time today.
That's very helpful.
But there are many, many questions, and insofar as the city manager's comments about how time is of the essence here, while I appreciate the impetus and the momentum of very substantial projects, having been involved with very substantial projects, it seems to me that there are enough concerns and enough questions at this point in time, that I'm really not moved by this impetus taking priority over taking a real hard look at what's happening right now and where we're going. Long after any consultants are gone, the citizens, the ratepayers of Morro Bay are going to be paying millions and millions of dollars. So I don't think there's anything wrong under the present circumstances but tweaking whatever time the council feels is necessary to make sure that the interests of the city are being properly represented. Thanks.
Thanks, Ron. Appreciate it. Anybody else for a public comment? Any time for a response on some of those?
Sure. I'll just, a couple of things I'll ask Rob, too. I think Mr. Sadowski is there. So, reference Coastal Commission, staff has reached out to Coastal Commission, both staff and our consultants have, actually, and Coastal Commission is, remains in support of the project as facility master plan. They do not have substantial concerns with the lift station that Mr. Sadowski is worried about, or has concerns about, and because they have received the facility master plan, they have not expressed substantial concerns, we could invite them, but I'm not sure that they would agree to come down and visit us to have a roundtable on this specific project, because they're not concerned about it right now. Rob, if you'd address the Wallace study and exfiltration?
The Wallace study was used as background, but Black and Beach, who prepared the facilities master plan, actually used more recent flow data and confirmed the flows. As far as exfiltration goes, we believe that we'll be addressing any deficiencies in the sewer collection system with the upgrade of the Main Street line and the various components through our sanitary sewer master plan. We know that the pipeline in the ground has deficiencies, and it needs to be repaired. So that will be addressed through replacement of mains and repair of mains as we move forward with those projects in our sanitary sewer master plan. Thanks.
Then, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Spagnola just recommended that we have time for public comment afterwards, which is great. Mr. Alexander, his comments are probably best addressed and considered when we get to item number four, capital budgets and operating budgets. And Mr. Reisner, a number of issues, the second of which I'll, the first is the contract amendment. So we brought the contract amendment to you before the next council meeting and determined it would be useful to have a, more of a roundtable like this, just to discuss program management sort of writ large, and less specificity of, although we're going to get into some specificity, specificity of the actual project amendment. And on where is the project going, the council will have an opportunity to discuss that, and item number seven, next steps, I sense to maybe a little bit of, we need to put the whole project on hold and reevaluate, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss that at next steps of number six.
Okay. So just want to follow up on one more comment from public comment, and then turn it over to council as well. So I know, Mr. Sadowski, thanks for kind of covering the Wallace study and the Cleath study, the request for Coastal Commission, you know, I understand as a WRFAC member, there were some requests for that, and, you know, I don't think we've had any support from the WRFAC board to move that along, and, you know, I'm satisfied as council member on the progress we're making and whether or not we need to have that formally agendized as a council. So if anybody else from council wants to discuss that, but I'm satisfied with the direction, and would encourage, you know, if our WRF subcommittee wants to agendize a specific item, then I would expect the entire board would support that, agendize it, and send that recommendation on to council, as I'm looking to our program managers when that discussion comes out.
And I'd want to add to that, too. I have reached out to coastal staff in an informal way to say we have monthly WRFAC meetings, and you're always invited to come. There's been no formal response or urgency as a response back to us.
Okay. All right. With that, so just open it up for council, for general comments and discussions and questions, and then we can go through each amendment one by one, and we'll kind of tag-team this back and forth. Mr. Heding?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one comment that wasn't addressed from Mr. Sadowski. I'm not quite sure what records are not available that are public documents that he's referring to, and was wondering if those could be identified and made available if we know what they are. If we don't know what they are, if we could find out what they are. I just took the note down. I have no idea what the reference is to.
Thank you. I did not respond to that. Should have. I'm not sure. We've had a number of public records requests from Mr. Sadowski. Staff is normally quite good about responding to those as quickly as possible. I'm not positive exactly which one he is referring to. I'm not aware of any reports that the city has that we've been unable or unwilling, I'm sure we haven't been unwilling, but unable to produce. Important to note is just with the Public Records Act request, we're at large, the city is required to provide reports that we actually have on hand, vice to go out and either create new reports or to find, or to find reports produced by other elements. So I will communicate with Mr. Sadowski after the meeting to determine if there is some specific piece of information that the city has that he requires.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Maybe also, Matt, why don't you start?
Actually, I'd like to follow up on what John just asked, and with Dave. Mr. Sadowski and gentlemen, Mike or John, you guys can talk to it. He was talking, and he's mentioned a few times, and not just him, talking about the previous studies that have been used and deciding as failures. Could you give name to the study that is most recent? And is that the Black and Beach one he's referring to?
No, I believe what, well, what he's referring to is there was a sewer, in particular, there was a sewer system master plan that was performed by Wallace Group, and that was, I think, 2005.
2004, '06.
Yeah, 2005 study. Now, we use that as one point of information, but the facility master plan Black and Beach developed took that as just kind of one point of background information, and it took the last 11 years of flow data that the city had to develop flow and loading projections for the master plan. So it was a point of information, but it wasn't the only thing that, you know, it wasn't, Black and Beach relied mostly on the most current, most recent information. It wasn't even in that study.
And so with that said, any interested person could go within the Black Beach study and look and see that flow data?
What they provided. They could look and see what Black and Beach summarized, what the conclusions they came to from that.
Okay. Got it. Okay. And then, let me see, and then that is very easily accessible on the city's website, and would it just be, what would be the known clicker to find it? Black and Beach study or?
It should be under WRF Facility Master Plan, and it will be on morrobaywrf.com. So a website under the Documents and Reports tab, and then, I'm not sure if it's on the city's website or not, but it's definitely on, it's definitely on our WRF website.
Okay. So if you go on Hot Topics, Hot Topics on the city website, the WRF project is there, links directly to that page, and then one more click gets you to the entire facility master plan.
And they are both city websites, but morrobaywrf.com is just set up as a city website specifically for WRF.
Okay. And then, two other questions. How or where in this process will Mr. Reisner's comments and Mr. Alexander's comments in terms of yearly budgets? And if we're going to change that to go from fiscal years to rather than a calendar year, where will we be addressing that question in this discussion? And then also on Mr. Reisner, in terms of clarity that he and his other residents are asking for, do we have any sort of process of how we're going to try to bring greater clarity to the process? In terms of clarity?
Number one, when we get to the fourth topic, capital versus operating budgets, we'll have that discussion then, and on clarity, that's one thing we hope to gain through this whole study session, is both as sort of information, education for all of us at various levels, and for staff to receive from council if there's specific products or items that you'd like to see presented differently, and what the cost of doing that is.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from council around the table that has comments or questions? Kind of going informal here a little bit? Okay. John?
I assume that we're going to go through this item by item, and so as we do that, if we have questions or concerns or comments, we'll make them. Is that right?
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up, I think, to maybe your earlier question, I have no desire for convening a meeting with the Coastal Commission and/or us at this time. I think staff is in constant contact with their staff, and if that were desired, they would have maybe flagged that and said, hey, we need to do that, so. So, personally, I have no desire to see that happen.
All right, cool. And with that, I think it'd be appropriate time to just start off item by item. If you want to look to Dave or Rob to kind of lead us through one by one?
We're each leading different sections of this. Mr. Scholinger included, so I'll start with Rob on background.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckingham. The reason why we're here is we brought this item forward on consent at the January 24th meeting. Council asked us to return this work session to focus on the details of the proposed Program Management Contract Amendment. And this will provide council an opportunity to discuss, ask detailed questions regarding the amendment. And we're hoping that we get good participation amongst the group and we all have a better understanding on this contract amendment and move forward in some fashion. Background, on June of 2015, the council, or the city morrow bay released a RFP for Project Program Management Services for the new water reclamation facility. Our Water Reclamation Citizens Advisory Committee Subcommittee Subcommittee participated in the interview process and then the full committee recommended approval of the contract with MKN. In August of that year, council, at a city council meeting on the 11th, the multi-year program management contract between the city and MKN was approved. At that meeting, we estimated, over the term of the contract and as stated in MKN's proposal, that both program development and construction management could range between $8 and $12 million for that then estimated $102 million project. The term of that contract extends through December of 2023. Program Management Services and contracts. The program management includes all program, overall program management, including subconsultant oversight and oversight of those consultants that may be contracted directly in the city, with the city that are part of the project. For example, survey, groundwater, they're not subconsultants to MKN. They're contracted directly to the city mainly to save any overhead markup that might be generated is the way we did that, but we're having MKN provide oversight. They provide assistance with consultant selection and procurement, quality control reviews, outreach to the community council and various boards. So, the difference between this, these professional engineering services and a construction contract is professional engineering services are selected based on qualifications. We then negotiate with the most qualified firm, a scope and then a fee. So, it's negotiated and the fee is based on what the scope is and their hourly rates as opposed to a hard bid or a fixed price contract where if Mike was a construction contractor, he would say, I'll build you this widget for, you know, $150 million and that's what we would expect to pay him at the end of the job. It is a time and materials contract, so we pay only for the time that MKN is working on the project. As scope changes, so does fee. So, if we desire to not do something, we would expect a requisite reduction in the overall fee, or if we direct MKN to do something else, we would also expect an increase in the fee. As I said, additional fee, yeah. As we said, MKN was selected for this five to seven year contract and we expected to be amending that contract on an annual basis. Or maybe in other terms, issuing task orders based on the project progressing and as we developed the information. When the contract, when the project first came out, we had really a vague idea what we're building. As we move forward, we develop that process more. Now, we know, based on the Facilities Master Plan, we're building somewhere around 150, 168, if you include all the contingencies, $68 million project on a site in the, off of South Bay Boulevard, called the South Bay Boulevard site. So, it's pretty well defined. Included in that 150 to 168 million dollars are the project management fees. So, it's not on, on top of that. That's the full project. MKN provides oversight of the contractors and subcontractors, ensuring their deliverables are on time and within budget. Program management is a little bit different than, let's say, a design contract in so much as a design contract, you have things that you get. So, you may have a 30% design that once they've completed that sort of 30% design, you've passed that milestone. With a overall program management contract, the deliverable is the overall project and maintaining that schedule and budget. So, we have components of that contract. The community outreach was held on mutually agreeable times. The SRF planning loan was completed on time and on budget. The Facilities Master Plan was completed on time. In fact, it was completed a month early and on budget. The Master Reclamation Program, it was, the draft was submitted last week, well within the state board's time and on budget. The groundwater evaluation, on time and on budget. So, that's what we're looking for, for our program manager, is to deliver those various components and the overall project on time and on budget. I'll stop here and see if we might have any questions before we go to the next.
If I could just sort of set the discussion up. Where we're hoping to do this is to, is to look at some of these discrete issues. This one is Program Management Services and Contracts. This is less about the cost of that contract. That's for the next discussion. But, and it's more about how a program management contract works, what a professional services contract works. And so, Mayor, now's a good time to open it up to council and staff for a back and forth, hopefully fairly discreetly focused on this part of the subject.
Okay, great. I'll just make sure. Okay, mic's on? Okay, we got a thumbs up. Just, Red, if we could just start with you and we'll go around the table and come back. Thank you.
Yes. So, Rob, you said that Mike has delivered interim deliverables on time. So, those were defined and specified as what, Amendment One to the contract or the current contract that we're working under?
They were defined by the schedule for the overall project. So, in the original contract, they didn't have specific delivery dates, but the schedule is part of the overall program. So, they are maintaining that schedule and delivering those based on that schedule.
So, some of those deliverables were by others. The Facility Master Plan is Black and Beach. They have a contract with the city. So, we, we manage their services, review their deliverables, review their schedule, provide information, in some cases, pull together background information for their use. And so, Master Reclamation Plan's a little different because that's a deliverable we're actually preparing, and that's the one that's funded by the $75,000 grant from the state, partially funded by that. But, that's a, that's a report that we're producing ourselves that Rob had mentioned. In the case of the groundwater evaluation, that's work that was largely done by GSI Water Solutions. So, that was not subconsultant to us. That was a consultant of the city. But, that's where the program management winds up being a combination of oversight and then also there are some, there is some deliverable production depending on what the item is. And so, what we've attempted to do in our scopes, in the original scope amendment, you'll see task groups in there that relate to coordination of Facility Master Plan or coordination of a particular work product. You'll see those deliverables called out that are being produced by others but that we manage. And then, there are some that we specifically produce, and we try to be very clear with that in our scopes.
Okay. And really, that's what I'm looking for is what are the deliverables? When are they due? And how much are we paying for them? And I understand the concept of program management. It doesn't matter to me so much who does the work as they are delivered on time and on budget.
And I'll say, to this point, they have them. From, from the grant application for the planning grant to the $10 million SRF planning loan, to the Facility Master Plan, to the water reclamation plan that you're going to see in two weeks, three weeks, all of those things have been delivered on time and on budget.
And I might add, just to go back to the 50,000 foot level, the deliverable is creating the program. Creating the program and the schedule and the component pieces and among other things, identifying consultants, in some cases, writing RFPs, interviewing them and working with them on a constant basis. So, those are things that have to be thought of as the program deliverables to some extent.
Okay.
Marla?
When you talk about producing things on time and within budget, where is the budget for that? I mean, we don't have an overall budget. We have a range of a budget. So, I'm not sure how you can maintain the budget without a budget that's clear for the given year, for example, or for the given tasks. So, it's very difficult to know if you're really on budget. For example, we had a lot of difficulty in finding a site. And I'm assuming that when you originally developed the contract, you didn't anticipate all of that time spent on alternate sites. How does that factor into where we are at now, being on time and on budget? Just out of curiosity.
Thank you. Sure. So, a couple of things we do in the program management contract that you'll see in our original authorization and also in this authorization is the identification of budgets for as-needed tasks. And the purpose of that is, as things come up that we don't foresee and we don't anticipate, is to have somewhere to pull money from. The other thing we, and it's with city's approval. So, we talked to city staff before we touched that. And Rob, it's an email from me saying, can we use this amount of time for this task? So, that's one area it came from. The other thing we also did is, one of the challenges with, with program management work, particularly on a project that's not, that where you're in the project definition phase, one of your goals right now is to determine what is your project? Is your project secondary treatment and discharge to the ocean? Or is your project recycled water for ultimate potable use, right? I mean, you've got a full range there of what your project could be. So, the project definition phase, what we do is, the first thing we try to, you know, we, we manage, we develop and manage the budget on two levels. One level is, we go out and we specifically say, we need to do this study and this task. And we work with a consultant or we send out RFPs and get multiple consultants to propose on those. They establish budgets to get to that milestone, wherever it might be, and we manage it to that milestone. And a good example is if you see the quarterly reports that we produce for the Citizens Advisory Committee and also council, there's a second page on there, on that budget report that's basically all the individual consultants, their contracts, what they've spent, and that gives you a snapshot of the different consultants that are involved. So, that's what we're currently doing with consultants. And then, when we, and in some cases, you hit, you get the deliverable from that and you see, we have more questions. We need to further define this. And so, the, the goal is, when we come back with the Master Reclamation Plan towards the end of March, when we have the draft that we release, is to work with council, is to have public outreach and determine and come back to council and basically say, what's your, what project, you know, what is the project? That's going to be the question. And you're going to come back to us and you're going to define that. And from that point on, we've got a defined budget that carries all the way up through construction.
So, it's just in the beginning phases when you're defining the project that the budget is sort of amorphous and you don't really have a budget? So, the original contract was for $900 and some thousand dollars and I take it ran through the end of this last calendar year. So, and that's what the contract was for, and is that exactly what you spent? Or is it below, under or above or?
So, one thing, that, one thing to keep in mind is, this contract, the intention was always it's going to be up to an eight-year agreement, that there's an initial authorization for $920,000. And at the time, that was budgeted to get through roughly 12 months, plus minus. Now, with, with specific tasks.
Such as prepare the EIR for release.
X number of newsletters or postcards, do X number of workshops.
So, that $900,000, there was a budget, that $900,000, that accomplished these things within, with that money in this period of time.
Right.
So, what we were able, what we wound up doing is we, the reason this is Amendment Two and not Amendment One is because when we got toward about the October timeframe, I believe, right when we were about to release the Facility Master Plan, what we recognized was there were some task groups that we hadn't started yet. There were some task groups we hadn't needed, and we wanted to try to judiciously reallocate that budget. So, we did that in Amendment One of the city so that we didn't request more money. We just said, we need to move this around to account for things like that, just some of that additional sighting work. We took some of that money from an as-needed task and some of it we reallocated from other tasks. So, it's, we do our best to estimate how long things, how much, how much, how many dollars we'll need for a certain duration. What we really, our goal really is to define dollars by the task to the extent that we can. So, what you'll see in this, and we'll get into some of the task descriptions in a minute, some take six months, some take three months, some take 18 months.
Right.
And so, and then the other piece of this is, we also worked with the city this year to develop the fiscal year budget. And that fiscal year budget is another way that the city uses and that we use to track expenses for all these different, all these different items. So, there truly is a budget at both levels, but when you're in the project definition phase, it's difficult to say, it's going to cost this much money to answer all the questions we need to answer to define the project.
So, the fact that I did notice that some of the tasks were carried over into this amendment from the first contract means that they were not done or they're continuing?
Some are continuing.
And some just did not get done?
And the ones that, well, and the ones that may not have gotten done, with Amendment One, what we did was say, we're not going to do this anymore. We've finished this one early or whatever, and we've asked that that money be reallocated to something else so that we can keep moving forward and stay on schedule.
Most of those were due to the six-plus month pause when we were going. So, you're right, I did not, I did not say that site selection was done on time or on budget. So, we, we spent more than was allocated at council direction for a number, as it went through site selection, as we did geo and bio, fatal flaws analysis in more than one location. And so, I, but those are, those are decisions we made as a city and that affected our, our program manager's budget. And then, he do, or his, his time plan for that year, and then he appropriately came back and said, based on that, you know, this six-month delay, I haven't been able to start these three things, and we had to spend more money in these four things. And, and this task was, was expanded and this task wasn't started.
And a good example of that would, might be in permitting.
That was one of the examples.
We made some of the assumptions early on. If we got through sighting quickly enough, we'd be able to get going in that. We obviously couldn't. Used a little bit of preliminary money there, but a lot of that is going to carry into this year. And that, that's what we would expect as the years roll along. We have to account for possible sidetracks.
So, is there a point in this process when we can actually have a clear budget?
I would, I'll also let that enter into Robert's mind.
A def, a pretty, a narrower one than between eight and 12 million, let's say.
Well, and for the whole, the whole project itself.
Yes, for the whole, yes, absolutely.
And so, one of the things that, that these guys have been articulating clearly for two years is, as every step goes by, we get narrow and narrower and narrower and tighter and tighter on how much the project's going to cost. So, we started, they started with six council goals. That was a pretty much the starting point, and go develop a program to deliver a project in seven years based on six goals. And that's, that's a wide And that's, that's a wide open aperture. And now, we're down to a, based on having a completed facility master plan, we're down to a much tighter, certainly equivalent with much tighter. It's much tighter than, than it could be about anything, but it's not tight enough yet. But with a tighter, with a tighter budget span, that again, is based on our existing goals. And then, once we get, get the water reclamation plan approved, or the master reclamation plan approved here at the end of March, get through the proposit team process, that doesn't really have an effect on, on the cost of the project necessarily. And then the EIR complete, by that time, we should be able to narrow down both the total cost for the project and the cost for program management and construction management. We're going to talk about that in a future slide, or future discussion point, but, but because the program management, construction management cost is predicated on, or is related to, the total project cost. So, if we're going to, if we're going to have a pipeline and dump all the water into the ocean, that's, his construction management cost for that is going to be significantly lower than if we put in four injection wells in our, in our, our subaquifer west of the, west of the ocean.
Okay, this is my last question.
This is for
I know that the contract makes the consultant responsible for budget and schedule, but isn't that really expenditures? Because we have not talked about revenues at all. And I'm assuming that the consultant may, or the program manager will have some responsible, responsibility for the revenues for this, for paying for the project. But that does not appear on the reports that we see, where the money is coming from to pay both this contract. I mean, I, I've read, but I, to me, that's, that, that's the other side of it, is expenditures and revenues.
For the most part, the revenue's coming from rates. So, they're coming, it's coming from the ratepayers. So, it's, it's a fixed amount that comes in and if, we see, that's one of the reasons we need, have needed to look at this on an annual budget basis, is, do we have the cash flow needed through rates to fund this project for this fiscal year? So, really, that's, in my mind, that's the only reason you would look at it on a fiscal year basis. Do you have the cash flow coming in to pay the expenses that need to go out? We did a rate increase in 2015 anticipating a project around 75, total project cost of $75 million. Well, as we've redefined and things changed, we know that that probably will not be the project cost anymore.
I'm just curious to know how much we've actually used of the rate increase that we passed with the last 218. How much of that have we used so far? Which I, I have never seen that. Is it just the program management costs?
Program management, facilities master planning, some geotechnical work, some environmental study work, but we haven't built anything yet, no.
No, I, I'm just saying that it would be nice to see in a financial report, these are the expenditures and this is the revenue and this is where the revenue came from.
I can tell you, all the revenue came from rates.
To, to this point.
Yes.
And, and be a little bit screwy with the rate increase because part of that was a water rate increase, which is
Right.
Going separately to our water infrastructure that we neglected for 20 years. Probably, Rob will probably go here next, but future revenues for the project will primarily come from the $10 million SRF planning loan, and that is now approved. So, that's the, that's the revenue stream, and what we need to make sure is that we have rates in place so that when we have to start paying back that loan, a year after the project is built, that we have rates in place to pay that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, it's really the city that's been responsible for tracking and monitoring revenue. Is that correct?
Yes, and that is tracked in the annual budget. We show how much revenue went in and how much expenses we had on an annual basis.
And we now have it separated out, correct? The new WRF is a separate line item in the budget, so it's not merged with the sewer, with, with the existing sewer plant?
The WRF, the expenses were moved out of the 599 fund, which is the joint Cayuga's current treatment. So, the actual expenditures were moved out of that 599 fund per auditor's requirements and moved into the 321 sewer operating fund, but in their own department. So, it's a discreet unit where those will show up. So, as mentioned at the previous city council meeting in the mid-year, the next time the quarterly WRF update comes, we're going to need to do a budget amendment, just to simply move over the budgeted numbers and
And also the revenue.
Anticipated expenditures as well.
And the revenue?
For revenues as well.
Thank you.
And those will all be within that discreet unit within that fund.
Good, thank you, thank you.
And that's, I know that's going to be one of the items that Craig and Rob, I'm kind of chiming on in a couple of minutes too, is the financial reporting, because that's something that's come up in discussion quite a bit, so.
One thing we don't have is a line item that has, what portion of the revenues are paying for the WRF project? We don't have a line item for that because it was anticipated in the rate study that that would be a portion of the, of the amounts needed. So, revenues are funding the ongoing operations of the existing plant. They're funding the WRF project, but they're also funding capital, other capital projects that we have. We have repairs that we make, we have improvements to sewer lift stations, we, we don't have any debt service yet. But it's, it's paying operations, our existing CIP project, and then maintenance.
But we know what those numbers are for each one of those items, right?
Yes, there's, there's line items in the budget for those.
Thank you.
Great, Marles, thanks. John?
Oh, thanks. For Mr. Rickenbaugh, I think you said, one of the major scopes of the program was to create the program. So, in essence, are you saying that the process of creating the program was creating the, your own deliverable to us? That that was created by the consultant group?
Yeah, in effect, that's right. You know, we started out with a scope of work and it, and it was based on best guesses. And then, as we got into the goal setting, it became iterative. You create a program, it's a feedback loop, and the different products, as you might recall, were added on to at different times, with different studies, and then there might have been three or four studies that related to siding alone. But those were things that developed out of a concept, we needed to get a site, and there's going to be a study. And then it became more than one. And then it was all a back-and-forth response to get there. But sure, creating the program and modifying it is part of the program.
So, in essence, we, and this is maybe for Mr. Leibig, we didn't know, without our program manager, what 100% of the scope of work would be. That was an iterative process that developed over time in conjunction with the program manager developing their own scope. Portions of their own scope, I should say.
We issued an RFP with a draft scope of work, where we thought we needed to be overall. So, it was a five-to-seven-year timeframe, we need to have a WRF done at the end of this, and you need to get us there. And we had some, some draft steps along the way that, based on other typical projects that you would see in a, in a scope of work. MKN's team took that and they proposed what they thought was a, probably a more developed scope of work. And they set fees to that for that initial year. Because when we started this project, we didn't know if the community wanted a secondary treatment to discharge the ocean or a full tertiary that we're injecting wa- water into the groundwater. So, you can't develop a five-year budget having that, that many unknowns. Or you can, it's just that the costs would be much higher than, because of the risks and the unknowns. Sure.
Can I just want to be clear on that? So, when you, when you say that, are you saying that you can do that, but the costs are unknown? So, you're basically kind of, they're projections based on that theoretical plant?
Yes.
Okay.
And remember, I stated earlier, this, this is a little different than a construction project, project. This is a professional services contract that fees are based on scope and we have a time and materials contract. So, if MKN's not working on it, we're not getting billed for it. So, they have to be working on those specific items that we direct them to do before we get built.
If we're, I'll say, if we're a little bit uncomfortable with this, then we should rethink whether we do a design build. Because what, if we go into a design build, there's, there is some uncertainty as you start into the design with one contractor, exactly what you're going to build out. And we can delay for maybe a year and do a design bid build, in which case, we would design, and then we would bid, and then we would build, and we would have perhaps a lot of higher level of comfort with that, and we would pay for that. And the, so, Rob, what you didn't describe at all, and Joe, you might jump in here, is, what were some of the checks, i.e. the WRF CAC, as we, as the program manager built the five-year program, the seven-year program? And then, is this typical in the, in the industry, or is there another way that this is normally done in the industry? But Rob, so.
So, my experience in these larger projects is, you have a detailed schedule for probably a year out, and it gets less detailed as you go out beyond that, because you cannot project with certainty that things are going to happen in the permitting world, in the environmental review world, that they're going to happen on time, or in the community desires world, as we saw with our project. We thought we were going down one path and we chose to look at several sites rather than focusing on one.
Could I make it easier for you?
Sure.
Because I think we're going down a path that, I don't know how we're going down a negative path, but that's not where I was headed.
Okay.
Mr. Buckingham, my question is simply is, in processes like this, the, the owner, Bill, the, the city as an owner and a contractor for services like this, the scope is not well-defined upfront, and the hiring of a project manager often involves the development of a more refined scope by that project manager as a point of clarification. Nothing wrong with that, I'm just trying to clarify that. It wasn't
That's, that's correct.
A negative comment.
That's, that's correct.
It's not saying bad boy city for not, not knowing what our scope is. I understand that, and I just want to make it clear to everybody that that's the process. When I ran projects, that's how we did it.
Yeah.
And so, that, don't need any more clarification.
And as we move forward, we'll develop
Right. Totally understand.
Yeah. Like, like I tell people, my, my line is, we'll know exactly what it costs us the day after we make, cut the final check to the contractor.
And, and I don't consider it to be a conflict of interest to do that. And so, that's where I was not heading. I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
Second question is this. The, and the add-on, I guess, to that is, the scope is always a moving pro, uh, target. That scope of the project itself will become a moving target over the years as you go out and the project is more refined. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. So, my second question is this. What is the process internally for determining the metrics for measuring success of the deliverable, once it's defined? I, I totally get the tasks that have been outlined, and the, the, one of the major problems I had with the first go-around was that there was a summary sheet that had the task number associated with that, and then there was didactic background material that explained the summary of the hours, and in many cases, the explanation didn't delineate what the total hours basically came to. So, I, I guess, as we move along, what metrics do we use to evaluate this contract on an ongoing basis? And I agree with public comment, it should be more than annually, but what are our metrics and how do we determine those?
So, first, oh, that's the first part first, or the second part first. We evaluate MKN on a daily basis. We have a termination clause that, in our contracts, that basically, we can terminate them at any time.
For no reason.
For no reason.
I know it's a 30-day term, I get that.
Yeah. So, the, with program management, the main metric is schedule. Because as we've all talked about before, time is money. Time value of money is playing, is a very large factor in this, in this project. And there is cost escalation at play. So, maintaining that schedule is the most important, important metric on program management.
We also have standing meetings with city staff twice a month. So, and, and we typically, and they're, I mean, they're very, very, we get into a lot of the, a lot of detail during those meetings, they run from one to two hours. That's, that has been a regular opportunity for us to get feedback from city staff on, why is this late? You know, is this going to be on time? You know, why, are these got, you know, that's where we really kind of dive into it. Another thing I would say is, the, in terms of the quality, in terms of the management of the consultants, part of the scope negotiation is making sure we have enough detail in their scope that we can evaluate their performance and make sure they've delivered what they're supposed to deliver. And so, we've, we've done that with all the consultants. So, everybody has a, a contract, a defined scope of work, a defined budget, a schedule, and, and that's how, that's how we manage each one of those, is we manage it according to their contract that they signed. But we make sure everything's in there that needs to be in there.
And the expectation would be, the city should do the same with you as program manager.
Yes.
And thusly, my point about the summary hours not matching the didactic material and the explanation of those, but I'm sure we'll get into some of that. So, if the main metric is schedule, then what is the qualitative measure for success of the program managers? That's a quantitative thing that you talked about, meetings every two weeks. I get that, we met, that's a process issue. What is the qualitative measure for success, or successes in aspects of the tasks?
Give you an example, the facilities master plan. We had an expected delivery date of December of 2016. The delivery date was actually in November of 2016. So, we maintained that schedule by oversight, Mike's oversight of that contractor, making sure they delivered that product within the amount of time. That's really their, program manager's main purpose in life is to act as a cattle prod to everybody else that's working on, on the project, and to keep them moving forward to ultimately deliver the construction project on time.
And I don't want to belabor it, Rob, I'm really not trying to put you on the spot. I guess, I'm just trying to understand, from the standpoint of managing Mike and John's overall project management services, from a qualitative standpoint, how well they did, not when they met it, and did they meet it on time? But what's the quality of the product that we're getting? I'm used to seeing metrics in program management that aren't just time-based, but are qualitative parameters.
Oh, well, I'll jump in, in one place. We're just a reflection of the work that's done by everybody who's working under our management. And if, if you didn't like the facility master plan, or don't like any of the other products that come forward, we'll hear about it through WRF CAC, we'll hear about it from you directly. You would say, this doesn't meet, this is bad quality work, which reflects badly on us. But if you think the work products that come in are good quality, it's probably because we work pretty closely with them. So, it's a indirect qualitative metric.
Totally subjective, no objective measures whatsoever.
Well, if, if you like the work, then that, that, that tells us something. And if you thought it was insufficient or unprofessional, you would tell us that too. And, and we'd hear about that immediately from Dave and Rob and other city staff that are working with us directly in our roles.
And what, some, some of the tasks, some of the tasks we're going to look at tonight are, are perhaps challenging to put a quantitative metric on it, such as to put a quantitative metric on it, such as public outreach. How do we grade the public outreach? Is it the quality of the flyer that was printed? Is it the number of people that attended the public outreach session for the facility master plan? Is it that five people clapped at the end of that presentation? And so, some of those are highly subjective metrics that, and likely, in the program management world, many of the metrics are more subjective compared to, to other contract delivery, where you can see a product, you can measure an effluent, or something like that.
Fair enough. How do we monitor for redundancies, vis a vis, why do we have two websites? And why do we pay to maintain two websites for the project?
The, where we maintain, so we would be paying for web presence regardless of it's on the contracted website, the external, or our website. We pay for a certain number of pages that we, it's based on page use. So, we pay for it one way or the other, whether it's morobaca.gov, or the morobayproject, WRF project website. So we're, we're paying, paying for it. The other thing was, was simplicity. So the subconsultant that's doing the web work, it was more cost-effective for them to upload their information that way than to go through us and our third-party vendor to upload to our internal website.
Really, the only difference that I would see between you having the two websites and the one website would be the costs for the license and the hosting for the, for the morobaywrf.com website. I think that was pretty minor, I mean, I don't know if you recall what that was, but that was in the few hundred dollars kind of a thing. So, you're still going to have to, you know, pay professional services, or have city staff or somebody keep that information fresh, you know, manage the industry and vendors list that folks can register for, the community members list. So I wouldn't see a whole lot of difference, depending on whether that went, whether that was a website that had been created specifically for the WRF, or whether it was under the city's website. One comment we have received, too, is it's, one thing we've heard from a few folks is that it's easier to find things on this current website than it was under the city's old website, because you've had to go through the city website, and then dig into that, dig through that into the documents and reports.
One thing I'll note is here is, this contract was, initial contract was let about the same time that the city was, in fact, it was the same month that the city was starting to revamp our IT presence. So Sam Taylor came to work on the 5th of June, and this contract was approved, I think, in June. And we went, we had a, I remember the discussion, I remember, I think it was there, of why are we going to have a separate website? And why not wait for the city's website to get redone? The part of the discussion was, it's a couple hundred bucks for the web hosting, and what, what threw me over the line was, the city isn't expert in managing vendor lists, and we wanted an expert to do that vendor list management, because when it comes to folks bidding on our project, and having information about our project, we'll get a better project for a better price if we've got somebody who's experienced in that, managing it, instead of city staff who is capable of hanging documents on a website, but not some of the more technical details.
Yeah, so my, my real question had to do with, how do we measure and monitor for redundancy of work? Work that might be done in-house, or was done in-house, versus the same scope of work being done by the consultant and paying twice, vis a vis example website? So it wasn't so much getting on to the detail of that, but just, just want to know if there's a way to make sure that there's redundant processes are not paid for, is my concern.
And to be quite frank, our, our engineering staff doesn't have the time, nor some of the detailed technical expertise to actually do some of the, the detailed analysis. So, we, we would be needing to hire that staff on if we were to take on this project. And give you a good example of the evolution. At the beginning of this whole program, before a program manager was set up, we were still on the siting basis. The way it worked logistically with staff in reviewing documents, it was a, it was a larger group of staff. You had Rob, and Rick, and Bruce, and others would get involved with us to look at things, and there was some redundancy. One of the things in going through the program management, when we look at consultant work, it's Mike and I and Mike's team overseeing that, and to the extent necessary, bringing Rob in to double-check on things we have questions for, and really letting Rob do his work, and then focusing on the oversight of our contract, rather than the technical work, which is what we're doing. So we're trying to avoid the redundancies.
Good. My last question is this. How do, does the city know that the consultant, program manager, has an incentive to be efficient if there is no incentive built into the contract for efficiency? And if not, can that be built in?
Well, I, I think there is an incentive to be efficient with, with their time. Because it is a time and materials contract not to exceed, there's, really is a cap on that contract. If Mike says he'll deliver a product for X amount of hours, unless there's been a change in conditions, we don't agree to a scope, scope change or a fee change. So he has to be efficient with his time.
What I would say, too, is, this is, this is truly a fast-track project.
Get it. I'm really, pardon me, Mike, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm really asking the city.
I'm sure.
Who is the, letting the contract out, if I could just, my last question, and I, I apologize, I don't mean to be disruptive to you, or discourteous to you, but what I'm trying to understand, I heard at the WRF, I've heard at the WRFC a number of times, this mention of, if there's no skin in the game, then, then how is the consultant incentivized to come in under budget? Not so much to manage time to budget, but to come in under budget, finish early, and then at a lesser cost to the city. That's, that's really where I was headed, and I apologize, Mike, I don't think you can answer that.
So on contracts that I'm most familiar with, where there's incentives for cost reduction, or Caltrans-type contracts, it's in their standard specifications. So if a contractor figures out a way to do something quicker, you split the cost savings with them. That's in their standard specs. Typically, I've never seen that with consultant contracts, is you're relying on their, there is some trust involved there. You're relying on their professional reputation, that they're going to work expeditiously on this, this project, and because, quite frankly, I think Mike wants to do other projects like this, in this area, and not have a reputation for dragging his feet, stretching them out. He wants a reputation that he gets things done on or less than the amount of time than we thought it was going to take.
Can I just ask something in addition to your question?
Sure.
Great question. And as I was looking at attachment one and amendment two, and it lists all the line items, we're looking at the contract amendment. So, we have every, every specific line item in here for this amendment, and the total cost. So, I guess, to your point, you're saying, what's the incentive? And when I'm looking at this, I'm saying, okay, this is what the expect, this is what we expect for the year and this amendment, and that's what we expect to pay for, and throughout the year, Rob, in their, in your weekly and monthly meetings, you're going to be meeting this.
Yes.
Right? And so, to, to say there's, I don't necessarily understand particularly how we would necessarily incentivize that, other than, I mean, I look at this, this particular contract, and I say, okay, this is what we need to do to move the project along, here are the line items, and here are the expenses to that. I don't necessarily pretend to know each particular item to the thousand-dollar part, in other, in other words, SEQA. We have SEQA, SEQA, forty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. And I'm, I'm not trying to belabor this, John, but I, this is a good conversation. I wouldn't necessarily understand how we get two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars in that bid or cost, but, you know, through conversations with Rob, or Mike, or John through this, and our WRFC meeting, that they would be identifying that these are reasonable figures, and this is exactly what we need to do this year to move the project to the next stage, which means we're going to build the thing. And is that, I'm just kind of looking through, in a reasonable way, I don't see the incentive, other than, I see what we need to do, and I see what the figure is, and we would expect that it's going to meet that, and along the way, if, if by chance, through public input, that we have a few more meetings, kind of like we did with Righetti and moving to South Bay, then, you know, this is going to be changed. But right now, we're identifying our project, and with the project being identified, we're looking at a pretty clear path this year with these line items to achieve what we need to achieve. And I'm kind of talking through it, more than a question, but I just want to make sure those comments are fairly accurate in this process. And I just ask for Mike, John, or Rob to reply.
Well, I'll just say very quickly, it's a great question, it's reasonable. As a consultant, you know, our job is to do good work, and do it fast, and do it well. That's how we get more work. This is a fast process. There, there isn't a lot of time for us to do nothing. We're, and, and in the few times there's a lull, we don't charge the time for it. If we submitted bills that charged time, which is inefficient, and inefficiencies, and Rob flags it, says, hey, you shouldn't have charged that, we don't get paid for that. So, we're working very hard to, mostly for our own long-term reputation. We, we only get work by doing good work. We have no other way of staying in the business. So, that's how I would answer our, that efficiency question. I don't know that we need anything else built in to incentivize us to do good work, but Mike may have other thoughts on it.
Yeah, the only thing I would, I would add to that is, you know, all of our work is typically, typically, we have to rely on references to get the next project, get the next work. So that's critical for us. The other thing, you know, the, as John said, there's just not a lot of time, I mean, to get this done, and the amount, you know, to meet the city's goals, there's, there's not a lot of time to spend a lot of extra money, do a lot of extra things. So I, and, and the other piece of this, too, is, we're going to continue coming back to council, you know, roughly on an annual basis, and, and those are going to be opportunities when we need to answer to, to council and to the public for what we've done or haven't done. And folks are going to remember that last contract amendment, we're going to look through that. And, and, you know, so we're, we're, it's a very transparent process. There are plenty of folks kind of watching what we're doing, both at, at staff level, public, the citizen advisory committee. So I feel confident that there are enough, that first off, professionally, we just don't want to screw this up, we don't want to overcharge a client. We're just not going to do that. If you don't believe me, then, you know, just take a look at our work product, take a look at the progress of the budget, and, you know, talk to the folks we're working with day to day, and kind of, I mean, that's, that's going to be the best assessment of our performance.
I have no other questions?
Thanks, John. Hey, Matt?
Well, there's not a whole bunch left to ask.
It's always last, huh?
Yeah, whoever's last, right? No, 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 whoever's last always gets to say. So in terms of the light of this, in terms of this professional services contract, when we look at your program management contract, and I forget which one of you was free, we were just talking about, in terms of the large, the immensity of this project coming to a head, we're, we're going to be, instead of being in this nebulous contract, moving on down, what, and I think, I think, Rob, you mentioned March, this March, we're going to start to see that it's going to be more immediate and easier for people to follow?
So let me jump into that. I see two major milestones that are critical for defining a budget on any project. First one is completion of all the master plans. In this case, it's the facility master plan that defined part of the project, and then the master reclamation plan that defines the rest. So when we look at that April-May timeframe, that's when you're going to see detailed program budget, you're going to see council being asked to make final decisions and provide final direction on that. So that's where you'll see these program management and all these, you know, various line items broken out through the, through the completion of the project. It'll be based on council direction. Second milestone you'll see is at the end of the EIR process. So when the SEQA process is done, that's when we learn about other conditions or other things regulatory agencies may require from us that affect project budget. Hopefully, there's been enough, your goal is always to have enough interaction, but that's not a surprise. You get that public release draft out, that you've consulted with agencies, you've involved them enough in the process that you don't see major changes. But when that EIR, when that public draft is released in August, we come back for certification in November, that's going to be the second milestone. We take another look at that budget and say, is everything in there that needed to be in there? Any mitigation measures come up as a result of some creek crossing or stream crossing that we hadn't accounted for? Is everything there? So those are going to be really the two milestones, where you're going to see that project budget truly set from that point forward.
I see a third step, and that's construction. When we go to get the bids on the construction, so as you move, we started with a 30% contingency. We reduced down to, based on the facilities master plan, a 25% contingency. As we move forward through construction, it might reduce down to a 15% contingency on the project. And as you move forward with construction, you reduce that contingency until you're done with the project, and, you know, my joke is, you know exactly what it costs you at that point in time. Yeah, I was going to say, it, just conceptually framing it all, it's the difference between going downstream and upstream in a river. If we're way up in the Mississippi, we know going to New Orleans, that's one kind of project. But we start in New Orleans, and we don't know if we're going to end up in St. Paul, or Omaha, or Pittsburgh. We take branches as we go upstream, and the branches are what Mike's talking about. And so, we're trying to get there, and we're not there.
Can I just clarify that analogy? Not that things are just happening haphazardly, but kind of holistically, through a public process, through community input?
Right, exactly. Exactly.
Okay, and so with that, that was a wonderful metaphor, thank you. I was just thinking, being a teacher, I'm like, I'm going to have to use that one. In terms of having some sort of, and I think, Marlis, you were talking about it, some sort of, and I know in the past, in the past year, year and a half, periodically, we've gotten an update of expenditures, and being able to show that. And I understand looking at the, the program schedule, but there's, that's a lot of information. And so, looking for something more immediate, and I don't know if we're doing that more in any sort of planned basis. And that would bring, as John's talking about, and I think all of us are mentioning, is some sort of a, there's not necessarily transparency, but just an immediacy going, okay. Understanding that it's in the program management contract, because for some people, it's, it's a nebulous concept, including myself. But if there was some sort of more immediate expenditure listing, that's basic and to the point, rather than something so large, from my point of view. And so, with that, okay, and, and with the plans, in talking April, May, and the EIR in August, is, as we're getting closer to understanding what sort of technologies that we're going to be using, is that where people can expect that conversation, or that's solidifying that conversation path?
So the technologies have really been addressed in the facilities master plan. That was the focus of that. Well, we have a couple different alternatives. We have a SBR, a sequencing batch reactor, and a membrane bioreactor are the two alternatives that we would put out for design build, to give the design builder some flexibility. Now, we're talking in-house. Do we really want an SBR plant, just because of operational? With Joe coming on board, you know, he doesn't really see the advantage of putting an SBR into the mix at all. That will be refined through the bridging documents, and what specifications we're going to tell those design builders. going to tell those design builders that they need to bid on, on this project. As to the, the first part of the discussion was, do we have a, a defined cost? Well, we do for this contract amendment, one point two-something million dollars, that will get us through the end of this scope of work. And we have a, a more amorphous number for overall project management, somewhere around three to four percent, and construction management, maybe somewhere around six to, six to eight percent. But as we move forward, we refine those numbers. But for this upcoming year, we know it's going to be one point two million dollars, year-ish. I think it extends longer than a year in some of those tasks.
Thank you. If I could just expand on that, are you done with that?
Nope.
Okay, thanks. Expand on that, because there was public comment at the last council meeting, that, that the city was only looking at nineteen-seventies technology, and what were we paying for, essentially, and it was, it was not addressed in the council meeting. It's probably a good time to, just came up to, to be clear about that. So, as discussed, when the facility master plan was presented to the public back in, in November, and then to you in, in December, the facility master plan is consistent with the project goals. And the project goals, one of the project goals is advanced water treatment for recycled water use. That means that the city is not using seventies technology, we are using almost the absolute latest technology. So, while what SBR started to be around back then, even if we were to do SBR, we will likely recommend to you MBR. In addition to that, we've got microfiltration, we've got UV disinfection, we've got micro-
Advanced oxidation.
Advanced oxidation and reverse osmosis. So, all of those things are, are two thousands technologies, and, and all of those things are clearly articulated in the facility master plan of the direction that the project's likely going. One other thing, this, so, Mr. Mayor, we've, we're nearing the end, I guess we need to get to your, your comments, but nearing the end of, of this item, and, and before we do, it sort of came up in here, so, Mr. Reisner's observation of the review period, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, and clear on what review is, and what, what staff assessment of our program managers' performance is, because they're two different things. So, in the base contract with agreement for consultant services with, with MKN, paragraph three B states, during the term of this agreement, staff will conduct a review once every twelve months, with review being done in the first six months. Then it specifies what this review means. Says, "For each review, the public works director and his designees shall determine any changes or additions needed to the scope of work, and provide budgetary estimates to be included in the city's budgeting process." So, this annual review is what we're doing right now. It's what the staff has done leading up to the contract amendment, last, last council meeting, and we're continuing to work on. But when it talks about an annual review here, it's simply talking about, in this eight-year contract, at least every year, we would review the scope of work, and ensure that the budgetary, that the, the cost for that scope of work was injected into the city's Separate that from the assessment that Rob and I have, and your community and you have on the performance of our program managers. So, Mike started to hit on this, so, we, every other, every Tuesday that's not a council meeting, I have a standing meeting with our program manager team. It's at one-thirty every other, on the first and third Tuesdays of the month. That routinely is a two-hour meeting. It's my meeting. I, I'm the guy sitting at the head of table, and is, is essentially the executive program manager for this project. That is, that is not me thinking that Rob, or Joe, or somebody is down there talking with those guys. I'm at that meeting, Mike and, and John are at all, at every one of those meetings, Eileen is at every one of those meetings, and we are reviewing at those meetings five to twenty-five different tasks, using the ProCore program management software, and, and assessing where we are on each one of those tasks. So, that, that happens every other week, and, and Rob is there as, as, as sort of my, my city soulmate and, and engineer, as we assess the performance and, and project the performance for the next months of our, of our program management team. We also have some very specific special meetings. About a year ago this time, I remember because it was absolutely pouring rain, Rob and I, with Mike, spent three hours at, what was the water focus in Atascadero? Because they changed names.
Fugro.
Fugro, they, they've changed names since then, but our, our water consultant, so we spent three hours at Fugro, looking at the initial hydrology reports from our, their subcontractor's assessment of, of the potential impacts on a, on a master reclamation plan. And then about three or four weeks ago, we had an additional two-hour meeting with GSI Water, looking at the final master rec, the final hydrology report. So, we're intimately involved in, both in regular monitoring of the contract, and in, oh, I also had very similar special meetings with, with Black and Beach on the facility master plan. So, while they're doing the day-to-day oversight of the subcontractors, such as Black and Beach, or GSI Water, Rob and I are coming in well before something's going to get to WRFCAC or council, to, to look from the city's, the city's perspective at those things. Which brings us to WRFCAC. The WRFCAC has their finger on the pulse of what the program manager is doing. The community has their finger on the pulse, because we've sat in this room for many community outreach sessions, in which we presented the master reclamation plan, or treatment options, or design options. And then the council probably sees these guys once every six weeks or so, it seems like, at a council meeting on some aspect of the project. So, I, I'm, I, I don't want to conflate that we only look at what they're doing once a year. Once a year, we're reviewing the scope of this eight-year contract and looking at amendments. But, but otherwise, your staff team, your executive staff team is, has, I, I think, a pretty good finger on the pulse of what our, our consultants are doing.
Okay, great, thanks. And I'm just going to conclude this on my discussion questions. And all great discussion and questions up to this point, thanks. I just wanted to follow up on the WRF draft master plan, when it was reviewed by our citizens advisory committees, the WRFCAC. So, having watched that, I was really, really impressed with the, the team, the citizens' advisory team's comments, and their variety of perspectives. So, when, Mike, when you were talking earlier about, if we are delivering a product, we get feedback whether or not we're doing a good job on that. So, I was thinking about this as an example, so, you know, I saw everything, you know, input from the whole board, and one particular input where, here's my binder, and basically, I flagged everything on, you know, suggestions on how we do that. And there's really good, really good information on everything, from how it could be written in a context that was more readable, on a more average level, more than an engineering level, which I think is important. So, when you, when you got to that, and I'm getting, my point I'm getting to is, when I'm looking at this line item here for WRF, Matt, facility master plan, we're looking at how we deliver that. And so, you were to take that product and all that input from the citizens advisory committee and say, okay, now we have a task. We have to take all this input from everybody, distill it down, and input all that. So, is that reasonable to, to say that you were able to, to do all that within the proposed line item budget that you, you projected? I'm just, just want to talk through, and this is an example specifically. Not, not on this, but, but in general.
We've, we've, we've found that we have, and the, the times when we needed to exit, you know, this, I think, the, going back to that contract amendment one, is we saw that there were tasks we needed to continue, and some that were basically over, and some that we didn't see coming up for six or eight months or so, that we could revisit. And so, as soon as we see that, we contact city staff and say, let's talk about a reallocation to get through this. So, part of the flexibility with the task groups, and the way that's set up, and with the agreement, is that we can, as we, we can't predict how long things will take. Let me start with that. Some things we can't, we can't predict things like how much com, how much public comment we might receive on an issue, or how much, or, or there may be, you know, some of the WRFCAC members have particular expertise in an area. Yeah, they have particular expertise in here. Well, just so you know, I'm not charging for this meeting today, because it's not appropriate for me to come in as a, you know, as a consultant, and I, I felt like this was a gray area and I stayed, I just stayed out of that. So, I didn't say anything to staff, but that was my decision, was not to charge for today, because I feel like if, if I submit a contract to you, and if it takes me two minutes to explain it, that's not really the city's fault. So, but, what I would say is, when we see that we need to move, when we need to move things around and reallocate, that we, we work with the city to do that.
Okay.
I just want to add something to that. But, on the other hand, if it just takes longer than you estimated, the city's probably not going to pay you anymore for, for doing that, that work.
That's probably right, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, so, I mean, this is, thanks, this is, this is good conversation, and some of this in both community and, and budgeting and everything, so, I'm sorry, go ahead, I just want to finish up, though. Go ahead.
I think what Rob says, I mean, that's, that's right.
So, if, if the scope was to, I'm going to make something up, review and incorporate comments to the draft facilities master plan, and you estimated five hours to do that, and it took you seven hours to do that, you're not changing the scope. So, we're not changing the budget. Now, if Mike said, we, you, you had five more members review it than we anticipated, that would be a scope change, and we, they would be, we would entertain a fee change for that scope change. But if there's nothing changing in the scope, typically, for one thing, Mike's probably not going to ask for it. I've rarely seen a consultant do that. And we're, the city probably wouldn't pay for that work, unless we had a conversation ahead of time and reallocated other scope items.
Okay, great, thanks for that clarification. I just want to interject some example, and that one came to mind as one, one to think of. And then, I guess the reason why we're here is discussing this contract amendment, and so, just want to be clear that reviewing attachment one basically is the scope of work for the amendment, which, I guess, for my comments, I'm, I'm comfortable with, based on the information that we have to move the project forward. So, we had a couple of comments on how we, we review annually or not, and one, one thing came to mind is, you know, we just did a mid-year budget amendment. I mean, really, maybe the opportunity is to just link our mid-year budget amendment with this contract as well. So, we do, you know, we're doing an annual budget with you as our project manager, and during our mid-year budget amendment, you know, we can link in this item and say, hey, we're on target, we can have that discussion, we can be prepared to understand that we're, you know, we're on target, you know, maybe there's been some things that have happened along, along the way, but, and I'd, I'd be open for discussion from the rest of council on how they feel, maybe there's some different opinions on how we should go about that. But that's, that's just one thing that came to mind, as far as evaluating and monitoring the budget, and it's clear that we're, you know, right now, we're doing this on our annual part, but we do have our monthly WRF reports that kind of identify on things. And I would, I would think, you know, in the, the monthly reports, we'd be able to identify this particular contract, item by item, as it's checked off the list as well. And then, just, just real clear, the other one, in the staff report, amendments, and then authorized by the city manager, so, in the front of the staff, in the front of the staff report, we just want to cover that. Get to that real quickly. So, it's anticipated this grid, and maybe amended with approval of city manager on an annual basis as needed. So, just, just want to talk through that. I think you, you did clarify a little bit, but just talk through that a little bit more for me, as I understand that.
This is a significant, significant a project, that it seemed to make sense, rather than having the city manager approve a one-point-two-plus-million-dollar contract amendment to bring this to council, rather than just bringing it to, basically, daylighting this item, rather than doing those contract amendments kind of behind closed doors.
We all, we all agree, and we're supportive of that, too, on our end.
Yeah, okay.
So, conscious decision on, on staff's part, although the contract says that I could have reviewed this and approved it annually, we thought it best to bring it to you to, through the WRFCAC, and through the public process.
And to be clear, even through that contract and authorization, these amendments are daylighted. It's, it's, you know, within the purview of the contract, but it's all daylighted, you know, through regular updates. I just want, I think it should be clear that we have that information as well. Okay. I guess those conclude my questions and comments. And so, any further discussion from council, any question, follow-up questions? I think-
Are we going to go through the additional items on?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'd say any other discussion on, on item one, and we'll move, we'll move quickly to item two.
Yeah.
But this is a great discussion.
Yeah, let's make sure, then, then we'll, this'll be a good time to take a break, and then we'll come back and get started on item, item number two. Okay, thank, we'll take a short recess, thank you. Okay, thank you. And then we'll start on our next.
Okay, so the item number two is, is budgeting for program management services. This might be better termed normal costs for program management services opposed to budgeting because we've got another area of discussion, which is capital budgets versus operating budgets. So Rob's going to lead this part as well.
So this was comparison to some other agencies and what are typical percentages of, of capital projects in program management budgets. We also looked at, I don't know if this is a compliment or an insult, MKN's charge rates are, are below the area industry standards, so I think we're getting a good deal from MKN and Associates. Others for principal, you might see somewhere upwards of $250 an hour for contracts for other cities. In fact, Joe Miller commented that when he was working as a consultant, operations consultant, he was charged out at about the same rate as the principal of MKN is charged out at. Okay.
And not to denigrate Joe at all, but Joe's not an engineer. Joe was an operations consultant.
And then, like I said, some examples of other projects that have program management within them. We looked at the city of Fillmore, their program management costs for their 76 million dollar project was 11%, 8.4 million dollars, which provided survey, legal support and construction management.
I'm sorry, Rob, what page are you on?
This budgeting for.
Page three?
Page three.
Oh, okay, so that, what you're reading is not in.
It's in my notes, yeah, sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was looking for it. Thanks, say that again.
I was too, but I was, I could see.
Could you repeat that, I'm sorry?
City of Fillmore, 11%, so 8.4 million out of a 76 million dollar project. And I'll, this will be included in the staff report and that'll go to council on some of these examples. Included legal support and construction management. City of Sunnyvale, their project was a 318 million dollar project, 23 million dollars, which comes to 7.2% was their program management fee, included the master planning, but not design nor construction management. Pure Water San Diego, a 2.7 billion dollar program, 900 million to 1 billion in construction costs and their program management is 30 million dollars, so substantially less than the 3%, probably 1 to 2% of their project costs. But I, related to some smaller projects that I've been involved with personally in design work, I've designed lift stations that are half million gallons a day, couple hundred thousand gallons a day, also designed million gallon a day pump stations. You do the same work for both ends of the scale, yet one's construction cost is, you know, maybe 20 times more than the other, so the design cost is a higher percentage of the smaller, smaller project. But the tasks that you need to do are, are the same. City of Escondido, their reclaim water program, 280 million dollar, their phase one project. From Blackened Beach, who is currently working on the project, they, their CM or project management is about 1.5% of the project. And then city of Slow, WRRF program management, they have a staff report that they cited that program management would range between 3.5 and 10% for their 64 million dollar update, upgrade to their existing water resource recovery facility. They use two Rs, so they're better than us. Doesn't include construction management because the program manager was conflicted out of that, that project. So that.
Rob, can you describe the typical cost variable between program management and construction management?
Okay, yes. Did that kind of at the beginning, but I'll reiterate that. So typically in our scale of project, program management or program development phase of that might be between 3 and 4%. Construction management is significantly higher, 6 to 8% of construction costs would be the construction management side. In the RFP that we went for, we asked for both construction management and program management in this project. We haven't really seen any of the construction management side because we haven't really built anything yet, but as we move forward into the lift station and the WRF facility, we will see those construction management costs come in, in another detailed budget amendment.
And what are some of the variables? So some of these were 3%, some were 8%. Talk about some of the variables in those, sometimes certain things are included, sometimes.
Sometimes legal fees or they had an attorney on their staff. They have survey on their staff. So we have survey in our work, but it's outside of Mike's budget. They're contracting directly with the city and like I said before, we consciously did that at MKN's recommendation to avoid the overhead costs. They have to mark their sub consultants up because of, it adds costs carrying that consultant through and billing them and adding them onto their insurance requirements. Other things that it involves is how much design work is the program manager doing? We are doing with our project, our program manager is, is preparing the bridging documents to, it's what I would call design light. So we're not fully designing the project, we're putting together a set of specifications that a design builder can bid upon so that we have more certainty on those, those bid prices.
So a couple others that are, that sort of impact, or two other things that impact that are, that are not unique to Morro Bay, but specific to Morro Bay. So one is that, that some of these larger cities provide a fair amount of their program management out of their city staff. Escondido, big city, big public works department, so they likely have a number of city staff members who are working half-time, three-quarter time or full-time assisting their program manager or doing certain aspects so that some of these tasks are being done in-house, would be a way to say that. We, we're not doing that. As we brought on, in fact, I recall saying this in a council meeting, as we brought on, we're in the process of bringing on our program manager. One of the things I articulated is, Rob has plenty of work to do managing all of the other public works for the city of Morro Bay. Got a little bit of capacity to help me provide oversight to the project, but I was going to be looking at our program manager as the department head for WRF, for the WRF because, and so I sort of treat them as a completely separate department. Rob's sitting here, Craig's there, we're often all working together because it's a big team, but, but the point, the point is we don't have the capacity with our three total engineers to provide program management assistance, so we're contracting for all that. The other thing is other communities have varying degrees of outreach. So if you turn to the second page of the new, the new amendment, Mike's prepared a, sort of a summary table of the task list, just as a, it's a better communication tool than the actual task list. And, and in fact, one of the things, I'll, I'll take a step back here, I was going to say this at the beginning, one of the discussions we had is that the original contract amendment that you saw three weeks ago was essentially written by engineers, for engineers and a lawyer. It was written by NKN and as we discussed earlier, the city, the city manager had the authority to approve the thing. He was really writing it to Rob and to me and to Joe Panone as, as, from an engineer to engineers. And so in this iteration, Mike and, and in the staff report, we've worked to communicate it more broadly as a more accessible document. So back on point, that's one of the things that this chart is, is it, it spells out in a little more layman's language what the task is, a description of the task and the cost of the task. And if you look at task number 104, so this includes $105,000 of public outreach. That's nearly 10% of this contract amendment. And that's what we believe, based on the last year and a half of experience, you want as the city council of the city of Morro Bay. We could save 10% off this and not do, and other communities do that and not do all of this, all of this public outreach. But this is mailers, this is attending public meetings, organizing public meetings, going to farmers markets, all of that public outreach. And so every time we, we, we do public outreach, it's important and it has a cost. And so that's another one of the variables in here is that, is that, so fully 10% of this or really 8% of this contract is public outreach, which other communities would likely not commit nearly the amount of resources to as we are doing.
Thanks, Dave. If I would have flipped my page, I would have saw those notes that we talked about earlier. So that really concludes this item and we'll open it up for the roundtable again for questions on this.
And so as we, as we go through this, we, as we can go through the roundtable, I think we, we'll look for public comment on each one as well. I didn't do that on the last one, but as we get through this one, so Brad, if you want to lead us off and go through that, we'll come back, circle back around.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
I don't have questions.
Okay, no. Any public comment on this item? Okay. Matt, did we circle it? Okay, good. Okay.
Okay, the, the next item, item number three, really focuses on the contract amendment that, that you had three weeks ago and the new draft that you now have, and again apologize that we're sort of, that you're getting that today. It will certainly be in plenty of time for the council meeting. And to specifically look at the tasks within that contract amendment, and there was some concern about the specificity of the tasks, was the, was the, the written information specific enough, fulsome enough to describe what we were really expecting of the program management team? And I asked Mike to sort of lead that since that's, since he's the writer of the tasks.
Sure. So one thing I'd like to direct you to is we put together a cover letter on the front of this, just with a few bullets stating what we've changed or revised since the last iteration of this amendment. And first, we did add more details to some tasks that were particularly called out in the last council meeting, so tasks 103, meetings, we have set up grant and learn technical support, 108, maintain the project management system, and then 206, the rate study coordination and weight model analysis. I'll jump into that one in particular in a few minutes because we had some specific questions on that. We included the programs, the, the program schedule, but we added in the task names and the discrete deliverables that we may have or some memos and that sort of thing to more closely tie that to this contract amendment because that was another question that came up. We've always viewed this as we're, we're tied to that program schedule. We're just, we're simply tied to it. But we need, we'll make it part of this amendment, I have no, no qualms about that. Next is, we also identified the state revolving loan fund items that will be prepared, that we'll be preparing under task 107, the grant and loan technical support. I've included a large document in there and it was not my intent, it was not my intention to overwhelm you with a lot of boilerplate stuff, but I wanted you to be able to see what the SRF loan requirements are because the SRF loan paperwork, a lot of technical reports, quite a bit of information you need to submit, and I wanted you to get a chance to be able to see that as an attachment. Because that, we, what I basically say is we're going to provide a technical package, the financial package, environmental package, and then you can see what that looks like and get a sense of the level of effort. We've provided an attachment three, which provides more details on the deliverables, work efforts required for task 302B. Added quite a few pages there, but I want, I think it's important since we had the questions that came up at the last council meeting, that you all see the detail that goes into that. Because we have, you know, workshops and meetings with the architects, we have detailed work from a structural engineer, we have work from the electrical engineer, we have a number of sub consultants and we wanted to make, to show you where that effort goes to for that task. And then we modified task 105, budget tracking and reporting. And so what, what the current intention is, is to work with staff so that city staff uses their internal accounting software to generate quarterly reports and fiscal year reports. And we're going to work with the WRFCAT financial subcommittee to, to perhaps modify that WRFCAT quarterly format to something that's easy for the city to generate from their current system. Because we don't have a finance person on staff. We don't have a CPA or an accountant, nor do most civil engineering firms unless it's internal for their own accounting practices. So the, the original intent of that budget report was to give a budget summary. What we wanted to be able to do was say, here's, here's the, you know, here are the funds that have been committed as of the end of this quarter. And one of the challenges we've, we've run into is how the city treats a quarterly report is different from how a private, or, you know, a publicly held company might treat a quarterly report. And that's different from the type of project status report that we may be anticipating preparing for this project. So what we're going to do is we're going to work with city staff and I know, to, to basically have them generate, and we've reduced our scope accordingly, have them generate the items that aren't directly related to consultant invoices. We continue to, to track all the consultant invoices, we continue to track the work products, we keep all that information in Procore. City staff time, that sort of thing will be generated from the city financial system. And so we're going to work with city staff to come up with a way to do that that does not, does not overwhelm them and that we can still stay within that budget allocation we've got. So, and then the other thing I noted in the cover letter is I've got no problem modifying the invoice submittal requirements in the agreement because it's information we'd always provide with all our invoices anyway. So I'm glad to make this a concrete part of the scope amendment. So when, when we provide a, a report to, you know, our, our invoices to, to, to Rob, we provide names and classifications of staff, detailed hours, fees and charges for each task by date. Our invoice, I think our invoice mileage is 25 to 30 pages around that neighborhood. We provide summary tables on the front for each task group with, you know, what we've spent, what's left in the budget. So we, and then we provide a summary report on the front end of that. It's a couple of pages where we say what we got done this month. So we already do that, so I'm glad to add that. It's no problem to add that to the contract. So the other thing I wanted to direct you to quickly is the summary table we put together, I'm glad to run through each of these items if you'd like, instead of reading two pages to you, what I would suggest, I want to pick out one item that we talked about last time. What I've done is.
Where are we, Mike? And looking at, I'm sorry, is it, I've got three pieces, where is it?
Yes, so we had the cover letter dated February.
Got that, this one here, right.
We had the two pages I just walked through.
So it's behind this, is that it?
Yeah, the summary table is, is in that statement packet.
This one?
Yep, this summary table is.
Got it.
Put it out in the audience, it's this summary table. And so what we got is a two-page summary table, I've got a very brief identification of each task. of each task, and then who the lead consultant is, whether it's us or one of our subs, which subs are involved, what the budget is, and the start dates and the end dates, terms and months. Because one thing that's important to note, is there's been a lot of this, we're talking a few minutes about fiscal year versus calendar year versus project overall, capital budgets, and how that's done. But one of the key things we wanted to do is, every task I see starting within this next calendar year, since we have much better clarity now than we did, say, six months ago, and when, you know, during the fiscal year budgeting cycle, six or eight months ago, is I have much better clarity now, having gone through the facility master plan, been down the road on the DIR process and master reclamation plan, of the tasks that need to start this coming year, and when they need to finish. And so the thing I do not recommend that we do, is start a task that we don't have budget to finish. Because then what you're left with is an unfinished work product. And the fiscal year for us, fiscal year is important for a city, it's important for us all to track and understand, but it's arbitrary when it comes to a project this large. And so we could have arbitrary dates where we say, we're going to stop in June, but as you can see, these processes are all, many of these processes are ongoing. When we get down to tasks, and I'll flip to the end, but to give you an example, so task 303, 302, 302A and 302B, we've been midway down to the second page of that table. So developing the request for qualification, the RFP, interviews, and negotiation with the design build teams, and then the task 302B, preparing the plans and specifications for design build award. That's a process that we see starting in January and going out through May 2018. We have a good handle on what that budget should be, and what it would cost to produce those documents. And so that's, what we've done is identify every, all the major tasks we see starting over the next calendar year, and when they should be done, and we've put a budget to that. So that budget for that item, we expect that to take us all the way out through May 2018, that task.
I'll use a concrete one that's going to affect us directly. Upcoming is the SEQUA document, the draft DIR, we expect to be out in August of this year. We need to be reviewing the administrative drafts and interim products from May, June, July, and we have to keep that going to make the August. There's no question about it. We can't just stop arbitrarily at June 30. So it becomes problematic to do certain tasks like that one.
And then one I'd like to direct you to as well, is, so 206, the rate study coordination and alternatives evaluation. I modified that title a little bit and added some more detail there. But essentially, what we're doing is, if you go to, into the detailed project understanding, this is an expanded version of what you saw before. And I apologize for not giving page numbers on this version. We'll do that in the version that goes ahead. But if we go about five, six, seven, eight, nine pages in.
Page, or?
Yes, sir.
Both sides, she looks at both sides.
I'm with you. One, two.
Top of the page, just so we know.
Top of the page is, in addition, NKN will continue working. That's a very good first name.
What's the task number, Mike?
Task 206.
Just flip through till you see task 206. That's the easy way to do it.
So 206, so we're not performing the rate study, but the consultant performing the rate study can't do things like develop construction policies, or O&M policies. And we need to develop some alternatives that are somewhere between what's kind of the least you could spend to get, to build a new, basically wastewater plant, and all the way out to what you would do with groundwater injection, for example. So we need to, and we, our plan is to develop some different alternatives there, that the rate study consultant can analyze, so that council can make an informed decision when we come back with the master reclamation plan, based on what a rate impacts might be. And so that's, and it also includes our time to manage the rate consultant, perform quality control reviews of the deliverable, participate with reviewing some of their interim deliverables, things like their budget tables, and we also develop, we also work with them on their scope work. So that includes really all those, all that work. And then also performing model runs with their revised rate model. So, and these are not items that are in the scope work of the rate study consultant. These are things they don't typically do. They'll produce the right model.
It's a piece of what they need to have to do their rate study.
That's correct.
Right. Okay, sir.
And especially to give the-
Much clearer than it was before.
Especially to give the council options, so, you know, if you build X, you'll need rates at Y, or at X1. If you build Y, you'll need about Y1, so that we're not just saying, here's your only choice.
Got it, yep. So, so let's see, I think, so I didn't want to dive into too much detail. I'm glad to answer questions you have, and I think that helps give a little better roadmap on what each of the tasks are, approximately how long they run, get ties to that program schedule, too, so it's consistent with that.
So, Mayor?
Okay, we're good to go around?
So Mike started to get on to capital budget, operating budget. That's the next topic, so you can bring it up now, or we can wait till the next topic. So really focused on the task issues right now, if possible.
So let's circle around again, and then we'll open it up for public comment on this item as well, and we'll just kind of keep the order, and I'll make sure I get all the way to Matt. Sorry.
Start with Matt.
Yeah.
Yeah, after our last council meeting, am I on?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. After our last council meeting, I gave Dave a list of what I needed to see to be comfortable with this, and it's all right here. Thanks.
Well, my main question had to do with the rate study, because that was not at all clear, and you have just clarified it. So let me just follow up with one question. You feel that you need to do this many models in order to give us enough options, or are we far enough along yet at this point, especially if we are talking about possibly knowing we want to go with an MBR system, to not do quite so many of the modeling that is necessary for the rate study?
So, we, we feel like the number of alternatives we've presented in there are reasonable number of alternatives to capture the full range.
Okay.
And it could capture things like, you know, partial treatment of flow during one part of the season for this particular use. So what we've attempted, it's, so the core decision on whether you go sequencing batch reactor or membrane bioreactor, may not change that much, other than, you know, so, but the decisions on what you do on the back end, and how you might phase those, for example, those are the types of things that we look at separately through these alternatives.
But would that actually affect the rates?
Whether it goes SBR or NBR?
What you just said.
Yes, oh yes, they could.
All right. And then I just have one point of clarification. You indicated that the amount of money, and maybe this is for the next item, but the amount of money attached to each is for the full task from the beginning to end, is that correct?
With a few distinctions. One is, if you see the task group 100, one of the things that we talked about right at the start is that, that's what we've estimated for the next calendar year. But with the other items, it's actually precarious through that task, and if you read the detailed scope, you'll see that we line out, this is what all we will do for that scope.
So this contract amendment would include some tasks that are actually going through May of 2018, according to this. So we are paying for that in this next contract amendment, or we would be, if we approved it?
That's correct. And you would be paying for those, though, as we invoice.
You'd be authorizing the expenditure with this amendment, but we won't expend it until the task is completed.
Okay, thank you.
And task group 100 is the, is the, sort of the routine monitoring things, meetings, public outreach, schedule, and the other ones are discrete tasks that you can know when you've started and you've stopped.
Yeah, John, thanks. Just wanted to let you know, I guess we're on, this is a document that obviously we haven't had a chance to review in detail, but the examples that you gave, I think speak to the questions that I had with regard to backup detail and possibly redundancy with regard to the rate study, but also backup detail on some of the items that were summary hours, like 300 hours, yet the document didn't include a detailed explanation of what that involves. So, thanks for that, I appreciate it. I do want a chance to review it, but it seems to be, to meet the needs that we have. The only question I have is, from a staff review standpoint, how might you determine if the hours are reasonable? Is there any measure of that, or is it just an assumption that, gosh, it seems like, yeah, probably it's going to take 100 hours to do this or that?
Some of the items that Mike has, I've actually done before, so I know about what they take to do. Reasonableness is what we're looking for, and it's time and materials. We only pay for what they actually do. We'll see at the end of the contract period that Michael leaves some money on the table. He won't expend all his estimated time on some items.
Thanks, Rob.
No question, Matt? Okay. We'll open it up for a public comment at this time, in case people are coming up, and Joe, I was just going to ask you if you can kind of step out. Is there any public comment at this time? Okay. Okay, public comment? Thanks, Joe. Marlese, if you can share your microphone there with Barbara, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thanks for the flexibility in this kind of format, and kind of, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so Barbara Spagnola, I'm on both the finance committee and the WRFCAC, but I'm speaking as a citizen.
Thank you for that.
So, the first thing is, in your, in the staff report dated January 24th, I gave a lot of specific recommendations for contract language invoicing, and I just want to briefly go over two points where I disagree with the responses, but I think you've already addressed some of that with what's going on. And this is not directed at the, our consultant, this is directed at good contracting practices done in the commercial world, and hopefully here, too. So, one of the responses was, "The annual contract amendment process, as authorized through the budget, was not intended to require the parties to reopen discussions regarding other aspects of the signed agreement." And the reason I disagree with that is, at one of our WRFCAC meetings, one of the members was very adamant about how he didn't like the existing contract and what was going on. Response from the consultant, as it should be, is, "I bid a statement of work, it was negotiated, I did it, end of story." And my comment to that specifically was, "At the contract amendment time, if anybody doesn't like what's in that agreement, that is the time to address it." So I don't think best practices should be, we would have seven years of amendments on this, and I don't think that's what anybody intended, but that's what the staff response was that I disagree with. And the other one was about, the contractors will have an incentive to submit invoices in a timely manner, obviously that's true, but I still believe you should stipulate exactly what you want. I've seen too many examples where you get into invoice dispute, or something happens, or the company's sold, or they can't submit it in 90 days, you're trying to close out your books for the fiscal year. It's just a boatload of problems. So, so thank you, Mike, for responding that. That needs to be very specific, so. So that's on that, and then Mike also-
Barbara, your recommendation to have a no longer than period of time for invoice submittal?
Yes.
Okay.
What we do in the commercial world is, anything over 90 days, unless otherwise agreed to by the parties, because there's some problem or delay, are null and void. That helps just a whole lot of problems.
Sure.
And try getting something approved in 90 days for 20 hours of work that, you know, maybe the guy's gone that approves the invoice or whatever. You're just asking for problems, basically, so.
Got it, thanks.
In my opinion. Okay, so the next thing is, Mike, did I answer that question? Okay. Mike referred to some of the reports that the WRFCAC has asked for over the last year and a half. We are not totally there yet, but Mike and his team are working on that. But the reason I want to point that out is, again, it's important that we've been getting reports for the last two years on the consultant's invoices. We've had them add encumbrances to that, because that's important. But then we had the expense side expanded to include expenditures, labor, charged labor, supplies, Procore software, if it's used exclusively for this project, as I understand it is, et cetera, et cetera. So we're getting there, but we're not there yet, because, and this relates to Ms. McPherson's question, on the revenue. Right now, the revenue is based on the rate study that was done over two years ago, that was $56 million, assuming a partnership with Kayukas and 25% debt service. So on our quarterly reports, all we have is one line item, $71 million, that's what we think. But from a citizen's perspective, I think we need to, number one, you're going to have to go out and do another rate study, and you don't even have the, we don't even have the four years of rate increases, or five years, was it, go up through 2019, I believe. So, so the reason I bring that up is, I think it's terribly important that, from the finance committee, the finance committee spent six months trying to put city budget in a format that maybe people can understand. Now we want to do that for the WRFCAC, or for the WRF, WRF, the Water Reclamation Facility. We can't quite do that yet until we hone up this revenue. We can't just put 70 million. And if we want to add 10 million for the loan, once that is approved, we can do that, then we'll have to show the payments and the expenses, of course. But I see where there's a lot to be done there. The other reason that's important is, if you look at the example going up the street to our neighbors and what they're doing, and how they're communicating, which our citizens are attending, I don't know if anybody here is, but they had a very good town hall briefing about a week ago. And they had one chart that was so easy to understand. It was basically, here's your current rate structure, and here's the four components of that, O&M expenses, everybody knows what that is, operational, existing depreciation, wastewater treatment plant with Morro Bay operations, and reserves. And each little dollar mod adds up to the current mod, $52, and then the new mod, once this is built, is going to be 98, and you can see what that is. That you could put in a pie chart that somebody with, you know, eighth grade education would really understand. They'd see, oh, here's what we're paying today, here's what we're paying tomorrow. Now I know the costs are much lower, and there's probably a lot of reasons, and it's unincorporated city, and it's closer, whatever, whatever, but this is what our citizens are seeing and looking at, and this is what I think we need to, you know, try to, as we work together on all of these quarterly budget reports, to get out there in a simple fashion, so. Questions?
I like it.
I'm done for now.
Thanks, Barbara.
I'll be back.
I think I finally understand what we need to show in revenue, and it's really simple to do, because we already have that information.
That's right.
It's in our existing rate study.
Exactly.
Right, and that's what I was trying to get at, but I'm glad that Barbara came up and explained it so much better.
Okay, I think we can move on to number four. More public comment? Okay. Any more public comment? I look for Nas. Thanks, Ron.
In addition to Barbara's recommendation, in addition to Barbara's recommendation to you about providing, or instituting a deadline for the invoicing, there's an, I didn't see anywhere in the original contract that there's a provision that if an item is questioned or disputed by the city, that the rest of the invoice gets paid, that the contractor gets, the consultant, sorry, gets notified of the disputed or questioned item, it gets held in abeyance, but the rest of the invoice gets paid, as per term. And I have a quick question for Mr. Nunley. Sir, in your latest program, or not latest, because it hadn't been published before, in the program schedule that you included in your packet, I noticed that there are, down in the key, there are predecessor items, but I don't see any dependencies indicated on the spreadsheet. Are there dependencies, and if there are, it'd be great to see them.
There definitely are. We didn't include it in this version, but we can add the column.
It'd be great to see them, because you already know what they are.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just a whole column we showed, so we can do that next version.
Okay, good to go? All right, moving on then. Thanks, Joe. Move on to item number four.
So number four is a discussion about capital budgets, operating budgets, the long-awaited number four, and Craig's going to kick this one off.
All right, thank you. As City Manager Buckingham mentioned, there's been a lot of controversy over- So hopefully, we can vet out a few of those issues. So, in general, as noted in your first bullet point there, capital budget, capital project budgeting is generally done on a multi-year basis in that you have specific items within the scope that kind of leak over between fiscal years, such as the SEQA process that Mr. Nunley mentioned a little while ago. In general, every item in the operating budget is usually a one-year budgeted item, unless the city would move to like a two-year budgeting cycle, which currently they do not. Previously, city staff and the council has recognized that. So, in the current budget resolution that authorizes the, both the capital and the operating budget, which is Resolution 47-16, that, there's a sub-bullet, number five, under the now, therefore be it resolved, so the official legal part of it, that states that unexpended capital projects from previous fiscal years that the city council has approved can carry forward into the current fiscal year. So, it's kind of that carryover provision. One of the things in this year's fiscal operating budget is the total breakdown, as Mr. Nunley previously mentioned, for the work project, at least $5.9 million. It's discreetly called out by what kind, or the scope, or the individual contract line items in that budget. So, in that, those budgeted revenues and expenditures were budgeted for in that 599 joint Cayucus wastewater treatment plant, the current treatment plant budget that we'll have to move over that I mentioned a little while ago. So, those numbers are now in there. Again, those are just estimates. You usually have about three quarters of data for the previous fiscal year as you're building out your, your current year adopted budget. So, that's why those are estimates, and they're based on performance to the end of that fiscal year. And as noted, carryovers are a best and standard practice for capital improvement plan project budgeting. So, everywhere I've been, I've been to multiple jurisdictions, City of San Diego, City of Carlsbad, County of San Diego, and County of El Dorado, all here in the city. And that's how they all budget. It's a best practice, so. With that, there are some questions about funding needed to move forward on this project. A lot of that is cash flow basis. Do we have enough cash to keep us floating going forward? In the past, this has all been relying on rate revenue through the sewer, through the sewer increases that went into effect into 2015 through a five-year cycle through 2019. Even though Rob can probably tell you a little bit more about the state revolving fund loan that we got for 10.5 million, that's, that's included in, in this year's budget for revenue as well. So, Rob, did you have anything to add?
Other than, that's what I feel the most important link to fiscal year budget is to show cash flow. Before we received the 10.5 million, we were showing, basically, in outer years, as we moved close to the construction project, negative cash flow. So, we needed that influx of planning loan money to move this, move this project forward. And again, that's what I see the most important tie to fiscal year budgets is to show that we can pay for what we're doing.
Short and sweet. That's all I have at this point.
Okay. Great. So, we'll start off with questions. Maybe start with Matt, and we can circle around this way, and then we'll open up for public comment. Any questions, Matt?
No. It makes sense to me that, I don't even know if this is on, so I'm not sure why I'm pulling this forward. It makes sense to me that, that capital projects that span beyond a fiscal year, where cash flow is not predicated on general fund dollars, but Prop 218 revenues, annual revenue processes that last longer than a fiscal year, it makes sense to, to align those, not necessarily with the fiscal year, but to have it aligned with the capital project term. That's what I'm consistent for, that I am used to doing in projects I've managed, and it makes sense that we do that for this kind of project. If you do have a project that is dependent upon fiscal year, general fund dollars for cash flow, I would say that that would be a project that one would want to do based on the fiscal year management. But I agree that it should be with the period of the capital project, so just, if we had...
Great, John. Thanks, Marlis.
Well, I'm, I, I appreciate this discussion because I was trying to understand what the great resistance was to putting it on a fiscal year basis. And now, I understand that better. I still am curious to know why the contract amendments cannot be on a fiscal year basis, recognizing that the project is, has a whole budget and it's for multi-years. But the contract amendments, which coincide with how much money you're going to need in that fiscal year, it seems to me, could be made on an annual basis to coincide with our budgeting cycle, so that we could see it in our budgeting reports, we could see, you know, the cash flow and, and whatnot. Given that you've, you've got the tasks laid out, and you pretty much would know how much of it you're going to be able to complete, let's say, by June 30th of this year, and then the following fiscal year, that, I don't know how much trouble it would be, and I guess that's a question to put to you. How much trouble would it be to actually just convert that to what you're going to need to complete the tasks you have on the schedule for the next six months and then the next fiscal year?
Dave and Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, but when putting together this year's budget, I assume that's what you attempted to do. And that's why, when you look at the, the operating budget, it has the individual project items listed in there, you know, the property acquisition for 2.4 million and things like that. And as the project kind of changes a little bit, and the timeframe expands or contracts or whatever the case is for each one of those discrete items, then that's what will it change. So, I believe they attempted to do that, but that was before my time, so.
Yeah. And I'm actually just talking about the, the contract amendment now, as opposed to the overall budget. Yeah, just the consultant contract. Is there a reason why that could not be put on a fiscal year basis so that we could underst... You know, you've got, you've got the, the overall project budget, which is by task, but you know how much of that tasks you're probably going to complete by June 30th. And just ask for what you need this fiscal year, and then ask for what you need for the next fiscal year, based on, again, your assessment of the tasks that you're going to complete. I'm just asking if that would be a difficult thing for you to do, or if it would make any sense. You still would have the capital project budget by task.
If, I think it depends on what the task item is. So, procurement of design-build consultants is a longer-than-a-fiscal-year project. Mike could estimate what, where he's going to be at the end of the fiscal year, but he's going to come to an abrupt stop at that point and not do any work until we approve that next contract amendment and move them forward. I don't think we want to come to an abrupt stop with many of these task items. I think they want to be, they want to be continuous regarding the comment that Craig made on the line, detailed line item. We had an eye on, some of those items are carrying over because we didn't expend those. We, we knew that we weren't going to get to all of those, but we used the best information that we had available. As with all our capital projects, they, they pretty much all carry over. In fact, our, another consultant contract on this project, the environmental review is a multi-year contract that goes through the complete environmental document with, that's not, doesn't have start and stop with the fiscal year budget.
So, this contract amendment, let me just clarify it, just so I can understand. It has no end date. It isn't for the calendar year.
That's correct.
It's for the specific tasks. So, at some point, are you going to have to come back with another contract amendment? Some of these will, and you don't know what, what point that is.
Well, so, so here's, here's the challenge, is, well, what, what we try to do is, we try to look at, we got through the end of the calendar year. And towards the end of the calendar year, with the facility master plan done, we had good clarity on what we needed to do for, for the next year. So, we put the new tasks in that we didn't have before, extended some other tasks we had, and said, "All right, this is, we have clarity over these items out this far." The, if, if we go to a fiscal year budget, let me give you an example. So, let's say if we issue the RFP for the design-build, and I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to give you an example, I'm not sure the date, but in June. So, if I release an RFP in June, and we have design builders start contacting us right away, then I've got 20 days to respond to them before I have to get on to another contract. And what it does is, it does two things. One is, it's going to create an arbitrary line and an arbitrary end to a budget. Doesn't make sense in terms of the project. I don't think it necessarily gives anybody greater clarity with tracking what we're spending and what we're doing. And, and it's more administrative time for us to manage basically two fiscal year-based budgets, particularly if we're coming to you at the same time and saying, "We need this now, and we need that then." It just, so I would say, it's, it will most likely cost the city more for us to do it that way. It's going to be a lot more? I don't, I don't know. But it also just, it's just simply arbitrary. What if that authorization doesn't get approved? Or what if we go through a process for a couple of months on that one? Then, then what you've done is, we've created, you know, we've created a dead spot on a project that has a five-year timeline. And the more of those dead spots we create are opportunities for dead spots, and the more risk we face on things that really aren't going to make a big difference to how you're tracking, or what particularly isn't going to make any difference to what we're doing on it. Because one of the challenges with, we're in the procurement and kind of the planning and preliminary engineering phase right now. What happens to you is, you put an RFP out for a design builder, or RFQ out for a design builder, you might get eight of them, you might get four of them, you might get 15 of them. You might get 13, and you might get two guys that just sell equipment. Well, you got to respond to everybody's questions. And so, we do our best job to try to estimate that, but the, you know, it's, it's a very difficult thing to break that down. Some of these tasks, it's very hard to say, "What exactly are we going to spend in the next three months?" That's, that's tough. So, that's why we try to do it in a way that makes sense, that I can defend, I have a handle on based on similar projects, as opposed to saying, "What am I going to spend in the next four months?" So, that's, that's, I mean, that's kind of where...
Yeah. And then, to answer what Mike said, if there's a, if there is a six-month project that a sub consultant is working on that's bifurcated by the fiscal year, and we've only given him authorization to spend 47 percent of that, then we're now driving his timeline with his 30 other clients, and he's trying to manage how much he's going to get done before the 30th of June, not get too much done, not have anything spill over. And then, it, I'm not sure how much that happens in your world, but in my previous world, you admit, there are many consultants that are unwilling to bid on a contract unless there's money associated with it. Because they, they don't want to get halfway through contract X, and, and knowing that halfway through the contract, there might be an election, the city council might change, and there's no money for the rest of the contract.
And one more thing I would add, too. If we had to come up with a piece that was pre-June 30, the tendency on our side would be to make sure there are enough hours in there, because we don't want to get caught to June 10th and then run out of hours. So, you might actually see that cost estimate in the short term be higher than we really think it needs to be, just because we're trying to guess and not get caught.
But it becomes this arbitrary, you know what I mean? It's just an exercise. I don't think particularly helps the project. And it becomes an arbitrary deadline, or an arbitrary task.
Yeah. I asked the question because I wanted you to explain in more detail, because there has been some citizen interest in putting it on a fiscal year basis, and I think it's really important that we all understand what we're doing and, and why. So, thank you.
Thanks, Marlis. Brett?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the input on that. And if that was the new one with the public comment, Joe, if you wouldn't mind, we'll open up for public comment on this. Welcome.
Alexander, again. I wanted to follow up on Marlis's comments. I understand all the good reasons why you want to just have a continuation of a particular task, not pay attention to a fiscal year. But what I'm suggesting is, is that this report here, which details out the hours, is pretty specific. I think when you see numbers like 12, somebody has carefully thought through how many hours a task is going to take. This report is very specific about when these 12 hours are going to be extended. So, there's only 18 line items on this report. It would seem to me to split this up so that it would conform with the balance of this fiscal year, and a second schedule would be for next fiscal year. Would be a matter of two or three hours of some clerical crunching some numbers using just these two pieces of paper. And the reason I recommend you do that is that, according to the last W R F committee meeting, Mr. Nunley presented a schedule of all the things that are going to happen in the near future. One of those is this 218 vote. I would think for transparency reasons, that you would want the W R F budget that you're going to be approving and discussing, along with the rest of the city budget, to co, to, which is going to take place during the protest period of this 218 vote. And I would think you want as much clarity and transparency on the numbers. There's an awful lot of people in this community that are really struggling with this 150 to 168 million dollar number. And a lot of them are going to choke on it. So, the more transparent you can be, the better. And even if these two, if this split is nothing more than just a memo attachment, that would be fine. But at least you'd have a document that would support the numbers on the budget that you're going to be discussing in April and May.
Thanks, Homer. Anybody else for public comment? You want to respond, any response to that?
Just a little bit on rates. The project management budget is probably not the rate driver. It's the overall project cost that is the rate driver. So, we're talking 150 million dollar project, and for this year, 1.2 million dollar contract I would think the 150 million dollars is the more important of the two to, to be accurate with, and to make sure that we have the overall project costs defined. Not sure to what end we need to tie the, the project management budget to the fiscal year.
That said, I, I...
Oh, go ahead.
We could likely, if the council wanted to, keep the amendment as the new draft suggests, and add an estimate of how much, an estimate of how much we anticipate will be expended in this fiscal year, and how much we anticipate we expend in the next fiscal year. And, and we would need to do that, close to that anyway, to drive our fiscal year budgetary planning, and to, to line that up. And I think we, it might be a nice middle ground that will work. We can estimate that, and, and that won't, that won't hold various subcontractors, you know, to, to a specific number of hours. But absolutely, we can, we can get a good estimate and, and make sure that that's what we use to budget off of when we, when we do our operating budget for this year.
I'd be fine doing that. I just wouldn't want to have, you know, our seven or eight subs all tied to a budget that only lasts two months, or three months at this point, and then having to pick back up with a different, a second set of proposals or whatever. I just, I can see that, it will take quite a bit of time to get all that coordinated. But...
The second case, but the first case...
First case, we could easily do. I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have an issue with that. We would just take our best estimate at it, and just provide that.
I, I think that's a perfect middle ground. I hear the same thing from the community that Mr. Alexander was speaking of, the, the fact that we want to be transparent, and, and these are high costs, and people are very concerned about the rate. I agree with Rob also that this is, you know, a small piece, but to people out there, 1.2 million dollars is a lot of money. So, given that, I think we have the perfect answer, and that's to just make this minor adjustment. So, I'd support that.
Marlis?
Yes? Good.
Good. Brett?
I agree with Rob also that this is, you know, a small piece, but to people out there, $1.2 million is a lot of money. So, given that, I think we have the perfect answer and that's to just make this minor adjustment. So I'd support that.
Marla?
Yes? Good.
Good. Brett?
Good. Just making a comment, I mean, as we're talking about, you know, incentives on managing the project, and I would, I would just note that your comments, Mike, on how we're managing this, whether it's on a fiscal budget and how that's going to affect the cost, you know, trying to juggle that. I mean, instinctively, you're saying, hey, that's, if we're trying to do that from a budgetary standpoint, it's going to drive the cost up. And instinctively, what I got from you is, we can, we don't want to drive the cost up. So let's figure out a way we can do this that's being effective and cost, cost effective. Okay. So next.
Okay, so next item is, is essentially oversight. How do we provide oversight on this? Oversight from the, from the project perspective, which we discussed a little bit already. Invoices, though Rob's going to talk about, or no, Craig is, but how we make sure tasks are complete and then how we have oversight on the financial piece of it. So I think we're going to go Craig and then Rob. Is that right? We're going to go Rob, then Craig.
Mike, we have trouble with this particular one. I just want to make sure.
All right, I'll do my sliver, I guess. The microphone, the microphone isn't near Rob, so I'll go first. So, the first bullet there, the project oversight and financial oversight of the project. Since I've been with the city for roughly four and a half months, along with our budget and accounting manager, we've kind of switched processes a little bit to make sure we have greater financial oversight of the project. So in that, the Pro Core software, which is included to make sure that all the invoices get paid and approved and reviewed and make sure all the contractual obligations, all that fun stuff are handled prior to us actually issuing a payment. In that process, that'll go through Mr. Nunley to make sure that, you know, those charges were appropriate and the part of the work was actually done. Transplant that over to make sure that the city, with obviously the vested interest in the project, make sure from a project standpoint that that work's being done and the charges are appropriate. And then, once that gets approved, that'll get shot over to Sandy, our in-house CPA, budget accounting manager, who reviews for contract language, makes sure rates are correct, things like that. And this isn't just a tick the box process at all three events. A lot of these invoices have been sent back or questioned or need supplemental detail behind those. So we make sure that process, it is kind of iterative and it adds a little bit of time to actually paying invoices, but it adds those fiscal assurances and make sure that work is done according to the contracts that have been let. So, I think that was my little, little part, so go ahead, Rob.
And, mine will be a reiteration of things that we've really already talked about for technical project management. We have interim deliverables that we, we review. So, technical memorandum, draft reports, and we have our coordination meetings that our project management team, Dave being the leader of, we sit down with every other week, couple hours with, and go over each item. We've had workshops with Black and Veatch as an example, where they will actually walk us through, which is sometimes better than delivering a draft product to staff and waiting for their comments, is to squeeze it out of us through a workshop format, so they make sure that we get all our comments in a, in a timely manner and keep that project moving forward. So I think we have various checks and balances, along with each consultant submits a summary sheet of, in narrative format, of items that they've completed in that time period. So between all three of those, or multiple items, we ensure the project is the, the invoices that we get are for the work items that have taken place.
The, the third piece of this is, is financial oversight, more sort of broadly. And, and there's been some discussion about the financials for the project, is the city producing the, have the right level of financial oversight? And so, we have what we have right now, and that is, as Mike said earlier, most engineering firms, vast majority, except for their own internal corporate stuff, don't have, produce financials, they, they have project costs and, and then a project budget. And Craig's team is, is at capacity right now, frankly, working other city issues. So, so if we, if we've, if you believe we need additional financial oversight on this progress, on the project, and, and this might not be a decision for tonight, but, but based on what you, what we all see and do tonight and as you look through the project update, if, if we're not providing what we need, then we're going to need to, to add a half-time staff, a three-quarter time staff or something to, because Craig's team is, Craig's team's at capacity right now, getting up to speed on all the rest of the things in the city. And, and as management partners told us a year and a half ago, finance was understaffed then. So frankly, I would be tickled to death if you, if you hired a contract and agreements person, gave us authorization to do that, who focused half their time on this, and I would put them half-time on all of our other contracts and agreements. And, and I used to have one of those in a previous job like this and that their job was to manage all of those agreements and contracts. I'm not recommending that to you because we've got other fiscal challenges right now. But if you wanted to say, bring somebody on to do contracts and agreements and have them work half-time on the WRF and half-time out of the general fund, I'd beat two thumbs up till I had to go figure out how to pay for it.
Okay, we ready to go on that? We'll go around for, good, good discussion and comments, Brett?
Yeah. Craig, is part of your review, making sure that we have cash flow capacity to keep up with what we are being invoiced and what you expect to be invoiced for the next year or so?
Correct. That's not done, obviously, as every invoice hits us going forward, but that is something we will mark.
Okay. Marla?
Well, I think some of my questions have been answered. I think, you know, the bottom line is, when we look at these financial reports that, that WRFAC has gotten, what we really are trying to find out is, are we on budget and on schedule? And because there has never been this clear budget with revenues and expenses for a period of time, so that you could actually make that assessment, that's what's been troubling, I think, people. I understand better now why we haven't had a budget, exactly, but.
For the whole project.
Yes, right.
I mean, we do have an annual budget.
Yeah, I meant for the project.
Right, right.
And, and especially for this particular contract. But I, I do think that we could improve the financial reports that we see, and I would do it by, and I'm, now it seems like it's going to fall to Craig. So, a quarterly report that actually shows revenues and expenses for the WRF, or at least every six months, would be so helpful, where you can actually see exactly how much we've spent and exactly where the revenue has come from, whether it's the loan or the sewer rate study and how much from each, would be extremely helpful, because it would give us an idea of where we're at, at a given point in time. And since you're going to be the one producing the reports from now on, I guess I should ask you if you think you do have enough staff to be able to produce a report that is meaningful to the council?
So answering the first part of your question, I would not advocate for quarterly reporting. There's a couple of reasons for that. We currently do not have a, an implemented purchase order system. So, that is something that was put on my plate when I first started by Mr. Buckingham, that we'll work on and we're working on.
It's been worked on for a long time.
For a year, a year and a half. I can't speak to my predecessors, but.
Yeah, yeah, no, it has.
So in moving in that direction, it's more of a manual process where the Pro Core system does track a lot of that stuff and you're probably used to seeing that as part of the WRFAC update. But that would be a manual process to implement that into our reports and have that tied directly with our financials. With a manual process comes staff. So, as Mr. Buckingham mentioned, to do it on a quarterly basis would probably be a little bit of overkill, especially at this early kind of stage in the process a little bit.
Would we be seeing it, though, in, let's say, in the six-month reports that we would see on a fiscal year basis? Because you're going to be tracking this separately now, both revenues and expense, correct? So we should be able to see that moving forward?
We certainly can. It's going to come with some caveats, as I mentioned, with encumbrances and, and future contracts and expenses that are going to hit, but they haven't hit yet, so they don't show in the financial system, so you have an adjusting column, things like that. There's also the, the state SRF loan, which we would actually receive reimbursement payments for that. So that revenue is going to be a trailing index, depending on when we get that submitted and actually get the revenue coming back in.
Right, but you can always explain all those trailing.
We certainly can. I wasn't trying to push that off, I was just stating, you're going to see a lot of asterisks on that report, but we certainly can.
Right, well, because I think that, my concern about fiscal oversight has really come down to, I've never been able to just see in black and white where we're at. And it's been, that's what's frustrating, because it makes you feel like there isn't sufficient oversight when you can't really see where you are at on the project. So that would help tremendously from my point of view. I really wasn't criticizing the, the kind of checking of invoices that, that the staff does, because I know that you do a, a job, you do a very good job of that. So, that's my comments.
Like, one of the takeaways that Mayor and I talked about earlier is that this, this chart can become our tracking tool.
Right.
And as we, as we submit monthly WRF updates, some of which come on consent, we can include this with a percent of tasks complete, that will help with the task tracking. And then, we, we could, I don't want to overcommit here, but, but, but we should be able to keep up fairly reasonably with how much has been invoiced against each of those tasks as well and, and show that it's, so again, we have the discussion about invoicing and what we may see is task 80% complete invoicing zero, because that invoice is 60 days away from, from being submitted. So those things aren't going to line up, but is that, I'm looking at, I guess I should be looking at Craig.
Well, yes, certainly. And I was actually thinking, based on our earlier conversation about the mid-year updates and maybe including some of those things, maybe when I give the mid-year update, we can be a little more expansive on everything that's been WRF-related on that and then do the exact same thing when we present the annual budget as well. So that's your six-month check?
I think that'd be great.
Just adds on to the process, I think it'd be a pretty streamlined process by going that way.
Right. It would be very helpful.
Okay.
The first thing, I think, is that there was a significant need to daylight the expense review process. From a community standpoint, that's one of the issues that, on a recurrent basis, I heard from a number of individuals, how do we know the expenditures are being monitored appropriately? What's the process? It should be the city council doing that, you know, if not, how do we know staff's doing it? And so I appreciate the daylighting of that and the extensive review of how that occurs. It's extremely important to do that. And I feel comfortable that, that the process that you're using is, is a viable, good process for project management. As a council member, on a $150 million project, the biggest that we really have in the city, I would expect not to see semi-annual, but quarterly, if not monthly, updates. And I think it's about the quality of information as opposed to the quantity. I think we've got all of the pieces already there. And I know that Barbara and her group and CFAC have been working and WRFAC, the finance subcommittee, has been working on trying to refine and assist with the reporting format. And I think maybe one more tweak of that could be very beneficial. I just think that, from a council standpoint, that has to come to us quarterly for full review and then monthly for consent review, if any questions are raised, because of the magnitude of, of the project. The community, at least what I hear, wants to be assured that there's a robust process in place for measuring, monitoring and assuring that we are keeping the costs down on this project, yet getting a quality project from the standpoint of, you know, the overall equipment and facilities, et cetera, that we're building and the final product, which is water. And so, with, with what we've daylighted today, I mean, I'm very comfortable with that. I do think that, I understand the constraints with the finance department, I've talked with Craig, I've talked with Dave about that, I get it. And I understand that, that really I was trying to call out the fact that Mike and his group really can't do that. They don't have the resources either to be in a position, to be the financial reporters for the project. In the absence of that, it does fall on the city and/or the team to do that. And again, I'll just go back to, I think, the quality of information as opposed to quantity and/or product. So, thanks.
Matt?
Do have one question in terms of the, this contract amendment and the capital and operating budget. How are we going to communicate these needs for this specific, is this what this is about with the coming 218 vote?
So we're, the 218 process, it looks like we're embarked on, I just had it up here because I knew it was going to come up. So, we're on a glide slope right now for the, first to, to get the water rate study back probably late March, early April. And then to have the WRFAC, perhaps the PWEB, look at the water rate study. Also, a, if not a council study session, maybe some 2-2-1 council member meetings to dig into the details of the water rate study during that, during that period of time. Then to have the second meeting of April, to have the sewer rate Prop 218 initial discussion. And that's sort of a, so it's daylighted several times at boards and commissions, and then to have it come to council late April. And then, two weeks later, to have it come to council again for, this is the first meeting of May, for council direction to, to conduct the Prop 218 notification and, and hearing. That would be the first meeting of May. It's May the 9th, if I recall, 10th, 11th, 12th, May the 13th, we will mail the Prop 218 notices. 45-day clock starts, and then the next council meeting is the June 28th meeting, I think it is. Second meeting of June is when the Prop 218 hearing would be. So, we've sort of confirmed that today, confirmed that we'll have the master rec plan details developed to the, to the level that we can do the water rate study on, all the pieces fit together. And then, and then we have time to, to communicate the wa, the results of the water rate study to the boards and commissions. All that to say is, a significant portion of that outreach line that we talked about earlier is going to be focused on the wa, on the sewer rate Prop 218 process. And, and then we'll have to, we literally sort of got all this stuff finalized at our, at our bi-weekly meeting this afternoon. And so now we will, now we'll begin to put together the strategic communication plan, is what I call, excuse me, the public communication plan for that, that Prop 218 process. And we've got March, April and, and half of May to do that and do that well.
So it's all 18?
I have, I just have a question. Because the work that Mike needs to do has to come before, I assume, the person who's going to be actually doing the rate study, you've got 170 hours budgeted for your work that has to happen before the consultant comes in to do the rates, the, if, if we're that has to happen before the consultant comes in to do the rates, if we're going to use the same one, barrels and wells, before they start, because your work would come first, correct?
Some of it will come first and some of it will come later, because part of that task is to develop cost opinions, and then some of the, and then another part of that is to actually run their rate model that they create for us on the back end. So, it'll span, we'll be working kind of side by side with them as they're starting their analysis, because there's a lot they need to do to start, just to get city's current expenditures, get caught up on what's come in from the rate increase, so.
And is that enough time?
We've got two weeks of flex built in. We could move this two weeks to the right and have the Prop 218 hearing the first meeting of July. But we really want to nail it by then, because then we have the late July break, and I don't want this to come into August. Frankly, Mayor and I were talking today, the Prop 218 hearing is the next most significant milestone from a community project perspective.
Right.
If the Prop 218, if the future sewer rates are passed, then it's, then this is an engineering drill. But the 218 hearing is a significant milestone. And getting that done early, first, the earlier it's done, the more we can all go, okay? And second, the, getting it done earlier in the summer than let it drag into August, and then that starts to push the other end of the timeline to get the SRF loan in.
Okay. I just want to make a couple of comments, based on some of the input I've heard, when we were talking about reporting and whether it's quarterly or biannually, let's say. So, I just want to kind of get some feedback on your overview of those types of, I guess, added work scope. And as we go, if we're going into quarterly reporting, can you respond to that sort of thing?
I can respond to that. So, we've already budgeted for the monthly, those consent item reports that Councilman Heding's discussing.
Yeah.
So, we're already planned on that.
Yeah.
You know, the next one you'll see from us, we didn't do one in January, February, but we will pick up with those after the first WRFCAC meeting in March, because what we typically do to save money is we basically recycle that report, present it to WRFCAC. WRFCAC has any changes or comments, we get them into the version that goes to council. So, we typically follow that cycle. So, the next one you see from us would be March. We also will be presenting the quarterly, and with the, some of the delays with the power, I'm looking at Barbara, because we're going to send your subcommittee the draft quarterly report. It's based on the current way we're doing it, as of, before this comes in. But one of the things we want to do is use that as a vehicle to also meet with you all. After, we're going to get this one submitted, you all are going to review it, that quarterly report will come to council in March. And then, we want to talk with you all about working together to determine what is the, what is the best way to pull accurate but simplified information from the city finance system? And work with you on a reporting format that might do that, and try to lessen some of the burden on city staff, but also not put us in a role where we're producing what someone would consider to be quarterly financial reports with someone else's data, if they're going to be viewed as financial reports and not as budget summaries. Because I view those differently as a civil, you know, the way a civil engineer treats that is if a cost comes in, but it was accrued last quarter, we just say, well, that cost came in, so here's a total cost on the project. What you all are looking for is something different from that, so, and we get that.
Can I just, one thing Mike said, if I can remember it now, he said we didn't have the update at the last, in January or February, but you did have a WRF item at each of those meetings. So, what we're committed to is that the city council hears about the WRF every single month, hears about it as a business item in person at least once a quarter. This is what we decided a number of weeks ago, or a number of months ago. And if you're not hearing about it that month as a business item, you're getting a consent item update on the project. So, you get updated every month, either on consent or as a business item, and you definitely get a business item every quarter.
Okay. Any public comment for this item?
Thanks, Joe.
Sorry. Okay, thanks, Barbara Spagnola again.
Does that seem nice and warm for you?
Yeah, it is. Thanks, guys. Okay, so I just want to address, follow up a little bit on Mr. Heding and Mr. Buckingham's comments on the fiscal management. A lot of our focus originally was on the consulting contracts and then the invoice verification process, which I believe is 110% very robust, very good. But that is not the entire project. So, when we recommend fiscal management, number one, I don't believe it should be the job of the outside project program manager consultant. This has to be the city's responsibility, city staff. And I met with Craig and Sandy Martin on this. If we don't have the expertise right now or the resources, we can start with something, but I think as soon as you get more closer into the construction and the costs, you're really going to have, it is going to take probably half a head. I can tell you from looking at Measure Q over seven years, and that hasn't even.
Staff-wise, are you talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm trying, for people in the audience, I'm trying to.
Yeah. Not the heads in bed, but half a head at work.
Other half in bed.
No, the other half may have to do contract stuff later, I don't know. Because that was another thing you had asked about, city, looking at all the various contracts. But, not to get sidetracked, but at some point, you're going to have to have somebody has some good fiscal management expertise. Now, to be clear on that, if we don't get the data out in a summary form that citizens understand, I predict you're going to be inundated with more RFAs, which are going to burn more of your resource time. And as you already know, we have another website out there, Private Citizen, anybody can do, collecting more of these costs that somebody at some point may be asked to reconcile. So, we want to eliminate that. That's when we say fiscal management oversight of the entire project, not just the invoice verification, not just the contracts, not just, you know, consultants, et cetera, et cetera. So, and I'll give you a little editorial comment on the WRFCAC. Our finance subcommittee was originally one person volunteering, okay? Then another person said, because of their expertise in community outreach. And then another person said, hey, I'll help you, but I have no budgeting, accounting whatsoever. So, want to be real clear about our resources availability. We're doing the best we can, we're working with a consultant, but we're just doing what we can do. So, the reason I mention that is we have a resignation from the WRFCAC. We may want to seriously think about opening that up and getting somebody in here, if we could, on that committee that has some additional finance or, you know.
That's the WRF, you mean the CFAC, right?
I'm talking about WRFCAC.
WRFCAC, no?
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Didn't mean to confuse you. But, yeah, on WRFCAC, we could use some help as we refine these reports and all that. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Barbara, thank you. Okay, carry on.
Okay, I have two items left. One is just a couple of additional questions and issues that were sort of outliers, and then, and then next step. So, Mike, I think, you're going to lead this, just to talk about Procore and why that is an expense to the city, and then, I think the rate study support, we've actually already covered.
So, yeah, real quick on Procore. So, the city pays for the Procore license directly. That is not a piece of software that is essential to MKN's business. And I would say also, any software that we use specifically for a client like that, we would wind up charging back to you, marking up anyway, and that's standard industry practice. The Procore software is owned by the city, and the benefit of the city owning is you don't pay an administrative markup. Procore is actually priced based on construction dollars, it's a percent of construction cost. So, you're, you pay for that every year, but when you're done, the city owns that. You take those files, you have everything you'd ever need if a construction claim came up, you have all the change order history, everything that happens on, it's a really robust software for managing, like consultant costs, but it's outstanding at contractor costs and tying observations in the field to what caused this change order, like if somebody found a pipe they didn't know was there, and then you capture all that, you keep all that information in one place, and you've got a total history of that construction project cradled and graded. So, that's, we do have time in there, because as Rob refers to it, the care and feeding of Procore does take some time, because it is a very sophisticated program, and there are things we do to modify it and make it better. Like, one of the things we did the last six months was improve the process when we upload invoices, they go to us first internally, we have a couple of levels of review, then it goes to city finance, and Sandy takes a look at it, she can kick it back to us automatically through the software. Everything's real, pops up real fast, real easy to read, you can see all the summary information. Then it goes over to, and if she's okay with it, then she can click revise or re-submit if there's something she doesn't like or doesn't understand. Then it goes to Rob, and then he can process, and then he puts in there the date he actually reviewed and approved it, and when it's going out for accounting. So, we got, that's for every invoice, we got on every consultant on this. So, anyway, so when you get to construction, it becomes particularly valuable, and most, many agencies own, you know, the city went through a pretty robust process to select that software, and in many cases, it's very common for the agency to actually own that software for the, you know, in this case, the six or eight years that you're going to be using.
Two things from my perspective. So, at our bi-weekly meetings, Procore is what we're using to track all of our actions. So, we'll have 32 things or 25 things that we're working, or seven, and Eileen's there, and we're clicking okay, issue number one, and typing in there what the discussion is, what the decisions are. So, it's a, it's, we're using it, and that's that care and feeding, it's sort of like record-keeping. If you don't do good record-keeping on your project, then you've got no record to your project. So, the other thing is that if Mike, if a, not Mike, if any program management consultant were to purchase ProCare, Procore, then they would have to repurchase it for every city they use it for. So, it's associated with the city or the project, not with the engineering firm that is helping to manage that project, the way the license agreement works. Similar to you buy a license agreement for Microsoft Office for your home, and that's for your home, and not, I'm not sure where that analogy goes, but you can't use it every, you know, yeah, use it other places. So, that's the, we just want to make sure that was specifically a concern that we heard and make sure that was addressed.
Okay. Great. Questions, comments? Red, Marla, John, Matt?
I brought it up, and I'll just say, from the standpoint of it, it was a community concern that I heard over and over again, also heard it at WRFCAC a couple of times, I think you recall that, and wanted to make sure it got daylighted as to an understanding of how it works, why it's important, where the license resides, and where the knowledge bank is and is kept.
Right.
For future, which could be very important. So, thanks for daylighting that.
Great. Any public comment at this point? Okay, we'll move on.
Eileen, you don't want to talk about Procore?
She didn't want to hear it. It took 120 slots to get on Procore.
Okay, last one is, is next step, sort of, two things here. So, first is to get direction, Mr. Mayor, from the council on where you want us to bring the contract amendment back at the next council meeting, either on consent or as a business item. We've got four other business items at meeting, but you know that, we've talked about that. And then, and it may well be, you might direct one route, and then, as council has opportunity to dig into this, and they might say, oh, no, we really do want to talk about it, they can always be pulled. Also, want to use this as an opportunity to affirm our project goals, to make sure that we, your staff, are going the right direction here. And we are, we remain on track with the current project goals, and I sort of want to use as many opportunities as possible to make sure that we're, that we're rowing the direction you want us to row. The fact is that our goals plus our location equals a cost. And no amount of redoing that. Now, if we don't control costs, a very fair thing that we need to do, then goals plus location plus crappy oversight could equal cost plus. But assuming that we do the cost controls and the program management oversight that we need to do, the, with our current goals, specifically the advanced water treatment, water recycling, and with our current location, the project cost that we, that you heard in December is what it is. And redoing that math, we're going to end up with the same cost. The way to reduce that cost substantially is to change a goal, and specifically, that means to jettison the water reuse, water recycling goal, to essentially say, you know, which takes water independence probably off the table. That's one way to reduce the cost. The other way to reduce the cost somewhat is to change the location. I'm not recommending either of those, I just want to, we're doing everything we can to keep the cost controlled, but the, it sort of, it is what it is because we are choosing a high road in the sense of water reuse. First, managed retreat off the coast, that, there's a cost associated with moving the plant two miles inland. And two, there's an additional cost associated with what we'll talk about in late March, but the robust water recycling, recycled water system. It is what it is.
All right, so consent versus business item, I, we've really taken this discussion much further than we even would have with a business item. This has been really, really focused, in a good way. So, I feel very comfortable with consent, but, you know, I'll just offer that, and willing to have, you know, the conversation and input for the rest of the council on this. And then, I guess I'll start with that. So, consent and then goals, kind of achieving goals, I think we're on task for the goals. I'll just echo one of my earlier comments, as far as when we were making the ship to the South Bay location, for me, the primary goal is building the WRF. Any ancillary component to that as a distraction when it comes down to the WRF master plan, I want to completely focus on the WRF. Those are just my comments there as far as goals, and I know we'll have that come to us when it comes to a master plan in that form. But those are my comments as far as the business item versus consent. Red, Marla, John, Matt? Red, if you'd start us off on your comments on that.
I agree that water independence is critical to our city's future. I'd be happy with consent. My only concern is that I want to be sure that we are completely daylighted to the community, that they don't feel as if we're hiding anything. So, whatever that takes, I, perhaps just robust public comment with staff response afterward. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I, the only reason I can think of to have it as a business item is to give the public the opportunity to comment on it. I guess they could also do it as a consent item, but it's easier for them to do it if it's a business item.
Okay.
Yeah, but, and I'm with the goals, yeah.
John?
The concern I guess I have is that, even though we might notice a working meeting like this, or this is actually, what are we calling it? We're calling it a city council work session. My fear is that maybe a significant number of people or a community contingent is not watching this as opposed to watching the city council meeting. I do not want to rehash this to this extent at the city council meeting, but I think a summary report that can maybe outline what we have done and daylight, the important issues that need to be daylighted, could be very helpful. And I'm talking about limited reporting on this meeting and what we've learned, processes we've talked about, et cetera. I just think that's important.
Matt?
I agree with what's been said, that consent would be fine with me, but then maybe, John, that's a great suggestion in terms of a summary report. maybe, John, that's a great suggestion in terms of a summary report. I think we're doing a lot to daylight and trans, um, make transparent these processes with, um, WRF, but sometimes every little bit counts. So, I mean, I think business, we would just be rehashing so much of this, the same thing. But however, um, consent, I, I would be for.
Yeah. So, um, working on the agenda with Dave as we go through that, looking at all the things on the table, so, you know, obviously I opened up with consent and, um, you know, I think just as we were talking about this today and then we're talking about project schedule and the cost, and I think, um, I, you know, it's, it's complex. Every public meeting creates more information, but it also creates more question. And then, and we're, we're relied on as a council to, you know, inform the public as well. And I think we all do that on a daily basis as we interact with constituents. So, um, I guess my initial thought on, on consent is, in that I don't think we're hiding anything and I, I know that's the, you know, and I'm not insinuating anything, I know that's our concern, that's why we're having this meeting. We're doing everything possible to do that. And, and I have some concern that, um, at some point, we have to, you know, give a vote of confidence to the community that we're doing the right things. And, you know, maybe this is on consent, maybe this is a business item, because we can explain exactly, and, and Marla, you spoke to it today, hey, we've, we've kind of clarified a lot of things today that we hadn't before. So there's a lot of benefit to this meeting. Do we, you know, need to, um, you know, have another business meeting to, to do that again? Certainly if that's the consensus of the council to do that, certainly, uh, uh, would agree to that. I would just, you know, at that point, hope that, um, for the sake of keeping business moving at our council meetings, that we, you know, as a council can, um, you know, get through that, that business item as well and, and as, as we, and I'm speaking for, as one that, looking over at the clock as we're trying to manage a meeting, making sure that we're not short-siding anybody's conversation, we're being very inclusive, but understanding that we're trying to build an agenda, um, every, um, you know, every two weeks, and we're trying to get as much done as we can without going past 11 o'clock and how we're going to manage that. So, sorry, I, I'm giving a little bit more, um, comment on, from a perspective of managing the agenda and trying to be, you know, both, um, fair and equitable to everybody, um, you know, informative to everybody and, and then to some degree saying, hey, we've had this discussion, we're, we're confident with it. So, um, you know, I guess one more round of consensus on where we want to go with that. I know, John, you, you'd like to see, you know, some, you know, business item discussion and, you know, if that's where we'd like to go, I would, um, my thought would be that it would be a, a brief summary and we would have that and we would, we would, we would articulate that we had, you know, an hour, hours-long discussion on this and we would hope that it would replay and, and appoint people to, to be able to, to understand how much work was put on through that. So, those were my-
And I, I'll just say, if, if, um, the consensus is that it'd be a consent item with, um, just a well-written, two-page document that explains what we did, I'm cool with that.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't plan to really ask any questions other than to recognize all the positive things that occurred here and the process that we went through if it were open. And I think sometimes that's as important, the affirmation of staff and, um, this process. Um, and if, that will not occur if it's on consent. So that's why I'm kind of maybe now in the middle.
Yeah. And I'm with John. I think that if we had a very, very, but addressing the key issues and, and showing what we had, that we talked about them and what they meant, uh, and then giving the, really, we, I don't think we as a council have to have any more further discussion about it because we've already had it. But it demonstrates to the public that we have done that in a, in a way as a business item and then gives them the opportunity to make public comment. And so I guess I would support that.
Okay. Uh, you know, I, I sense that, I don't think we need to, um, you know, I would support that as well and I would be, at the meeting, I'm going to be supporting, making sure that we can get through that item as well.
Really quickly.
And, and, you know, there again, not discounting, you know, the, the public participation.
No, no.
I, I know you all understand that and I think we're having great discussion and, and really, um, yeah, just great discussion.
We just don't need to rehash it.
Yeah, okay. Yes, sir.
I heard affirmation somewhere and then I'm not sure where it stopped, but are we on the right track with the goals and water recycling and is that the direction that we're headed?
Are you asking for a-
Yes.
-robust discussion of, um, reach, uh, looking at the goals right now at this hour?
No, I just want, I want to know that, that, uh, that we're barking up the right tree.
Well, you know, the only thing I will say is if you're asking that question is that, um, at the end of the day, um, there's going to be an affordable rate to the community. And, and, and we're going down a track that I support and I'm, um, absolutely do not want to change the water independence goal. But at the end of the day, um, if a number dictates unaffordability on the part of the community, somewhere along the line, something has to happen.
And my, so my, my interpretation of this, and this could, spend another two minutes on it, is, is that, um, we know where we think we're going. We're going to do robust communication on the, on the sewer rate Prop 218 process. And if, God forbid, that doesn't pass, then that might be the time to start reevaluating That's great. That's perfect.
Okay. All right. So in, in summary, I think we've, we've, um, gone through your questions, issues, we've gone next steps, we've affirmed WRF program, consent, business, we're, we do a summary of the business item, we've affirmed project goals, and, um, I'll just look to the audience. Any public comment? We're all, all good with that. Barbara, thanks for, for all that. Homer, Ron, I know they've left, but thank you. And, um, with that, unless there's any closing comments from anyone?
Is this ours to keep now or is this going to change to where we want to update it? Is this going to be-
You can keep that and the one that you get in your council packet will be slightly different because I saw Mike taking a few notes on things you asked to have changed in there.
And we'll add in the note, the, our estimate of what have we spent this fiscal year versus what we've spent next fiscal year, just so we give you, this is our estimate, but there's going to be a little paragraph below it that says.
Okay.
So ba, based on your input, there's going to be a few comments to what goes into the council agenda packet that comes out normally tomorrow, hopefully tomorrow.
So I just wanted to thank our, our team, if I could. I just wanted to thank-
Hold on, folks, hold on, folks, yep.
Mr. Leibig and, um, our consultants as well for bearing with us through a process really that's important to our community and really has, um, nothing to do with questioning your viability as a consultant, but, um, affirming the processes involved to manage that and to make sure that we have a successful outcome for the community. And so, um, thank you for, um, all the work that you did to prepare this. Mr. Buckingham, thank you for not, um, taking the purview to just use the contract language and make the change, and thank you for instead daylighting it and actually putting it on the agenda. And I appreciate that very much.
Yep, great.
Yeah, I want to ditto that.
Okay.
I agree totally.
Great, thanks, everybody. All right?
Next time I'll wear a blue-gray shirt like Arkansas.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.